Through the engineering process, being able to complete when the bottom fell out of the market. So we stopped. And now we'd like to come back and do it. That's basically all I have.
Okay. I'll go to staff first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what's before you is a request for a lot subdivision and variance for a substandard lot in terms of lot width. Whenever you're subdividing within the village, minimum lot width in the zoning district, which is an R3 district, is 60 feet. When you divide this lot, it would result in two lots of 51.5 feet. And just as a reminder, we do have exceptions in our code for existing lots that are up to 50 feet wide, so basically between 50 and 60. There's code in there that says if they were established lots, then they can still be built on without any variances. But you cannot create new lots without obtaining a variance. So the lots would be 8.5 feet deficient in terms of width or a 14.2 percent variance. As all subdivisions within the village, there are some stringent stormwater requirements, both through DuPage County and some additional requirements through our own village code. So part of the subdivision is a requirement to hold stormwater on site. So you will see in the plans that there is a stormwater detention area that is on the rear of the property. I think if I'm correct, it is 55 feet. So it does occupy a large portion of the rear yard. No structures could be built in that. So no subsequent owners could come in and then request a shed or anything. Anything that was requested to be added, patios, decks, such, could not exist in that easement, which would be created as part of this. And as always, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. We'll now open up the public part of the hearing for this. Anyone who would like to speak on this subject, either for or against, could you please come in, approach the podium, and sign in, please? Please. Good evening.
My name is Chip Plumb. I live on 316 East Trobey. My property actually borders the rear end of this proposed property. I just have a concern about how the power is going to be run. I have a unique situation where the power line actually runs across my yard to feed just the current property and one on the corner of Blackhawk and Trobey as well.
302?
Yeah.
Your 316?
Yes. So I think I'm the only -- I've looked around the area. I've never seen this type of situation before where I don't even -- I don't know why, but about 100 -- my lot is 100 wide by 200 deep roughly, and basically the power line cuts my property in half from the pole that is east of my border of the property. So I called ComEd in the past because we did put a pool in, and they said that they weren't going to move it. I'd had to arrange to move it myself. But really, since this --
It's above ground or underground?
It's above.
Above. Running right through the middle of your yard?
Yes, which would be kind of a safety concern, really.
I would think.
So if you look around, usually, you know, ComEd or utility, whether it be cable or AT&amp;T or whatever, usually the lines run along the property lots, not through the middle of the yard, unless there was some kind of variance put in place beforehand. So there is opportunity to reroute the power at the rear of my property to go across to these, you know, these two new homes that are being built.
Okay.
So.
Good question. And perhaps to give us some insight into this, we happen to have our village engineer, Noriel Noriega, here tonight. And perhaps you could address this. And I think the elephant in the room also on this one is going to be detention. Perhaps you could address a little bit about what we see on our plans as far as stormwater detention for the proposed subdivision.
Yes.
Did you have anything else, or was that the --
I was going to mention that. I wanted to make sure that, you know, you've seen it where these huge homes go up next to, you know, just a single level home or whatever, and then there's also an issue with, you know, flooding, standing water.
Yep.
Good evening, Commissioners. I don't have any good and quick answers for ComEd. We don't -- ComEd will actually indicate where the power is going to be coming from. However, as part of our subdivision in the property, they will be providing public utility and drainage easements along their property lines in the side and in the rear. So if there's available power from Blackhawk Drive, if they have a service over at that location, although I can't guarantee it, ComEd will dictate where the power will be coming from. It would be more of a question whether or not they actually have utility easements on your property to allow these -- there are utilities to locate overhead on your property.
Right. We looked at our survey. There's none.
So we can look into that a little bit, but again, that is through ComEd. But on our end, I know that we will be requiring, as with any subdivision, is public utility and drainage easements along the property line and along the rear of the property line. And they usually bring service through those easements. In regards to the stormwater management, right now, the Village of Westmont Stormwater Ordinance does require detention to be provided. The plans do call for detention. It appears that there should be no engineering issues. We are requiring detention, and the proposed plans accommodate for such. Since the original plan that Mr. Watson indicated back in the mid-2000s, the village has done a significant amount of improvements already. At that time, there was no storm sewer through that. We relied on ditches on Blackhawk Drive. Since then, we've fully reconstructed and have a full storm sewer system through that area. So there's a little bit more options for them, for them to be able to connect and reconfigure the basin as well. And we'll do that through a process.
Would that backyard detention that's required now have been required in 2004, or were the regulations a little bit less stringent at that time?
It's the same regulations. We would have required it.
Okay, thank you. That answered one of them. The other one, I don't think we have the authority to get an answer on ComEd here tonight.
Mr. Chair, may I try to --
Yes.
I first have a question. Is 316, is that the second house to the east from the intersection? If I can ask our audio visual to turn on the overhead. My best guess, when I look at this, is you can see, these all used to be 300-foot-deep lots. You can see a subdivision line here. I suspect this lot, which is your house, was created. And is it running through your backyard through here?
Probably where the line right there is.
Okay. My best guess is I suspect that when there was a lot reconfiguration, probably the power line was originally in the backyard. But when your lot was created, they did not remedy the power line coming across it. That would be my best guess. And there is a requirement that the utilities are undergrounded for new houses, so there would be some remedy to what's going on there.
Does anyone else, would anyone else like to comment on this, either for or against? Is the hand going up? Sure, we can keep this as part of the public hearing.
You know, ComEd will require us. Will do whatever they require. So we don't have a choice. They tell us what to do.
Sure.
And so we'll do whatever they want us to do. We don't have a choice. I mean, and as far as the engineering, what you see on the engineering plans, as far as for flooding and everything, that's for the largest lot, which is what we required for the preliminary. Our house is going to be smaller than that. So it'll be less of a detention and everything. You see there, the house is not going to be built to the largest capacity. For a preliminary, we had to show what the requirements was. This is the max requirements, and we will cover whatever's max. Our house is not going to be that big with our whole engineering drawings, with our house middles and all that. It'll be smaller, and the detention area will be smaller also. Okay?
Very good. All right. Anyone else from the public? Hearing nothing, I will close the public hearing. And we will start with Commissioners, and I will begin with Commissioner Thomas.
Now, back to the power thing. Just, wow. So with the new construction, do I understand that the new construction power is all underground? So it'll be underground to your property line and then back up? Maybe.
I mean, I would think that they would probably go underground.
Just keep going. Keep going, and that's for you to ask.
I would.
Yeah.
I would be hoping to.
Right.
But I would rather than do that, there's another pool up here on my property. I would rather than park it from there. Because it's going to touch the overhead property. So I mean, I've talked to ComEd, and they went through a couple of ways.
Okay, so my question to staff is, do we have, as a village, do we have any -- I don't want to say standing, but I don't want to say authority because, well, maybe. Saying, hey, look, we have a problem here. What can you do? I don't know. I don't know how it works.
I defer to Mr. Noriega, who is approaching the bench.
Okay.
I actually don't know. I mean, the simple fact is, is that ComEd and the utility company appears to be encroaching overhead through their property. We'd have to look into whether or not there's any kind of old easements on that property, how the lot was created, and then what rights the homeowner has. And he may have to proceed with those rights against ComEd to relocate the utility if there is no public utility and drainage easement. But again, reiterating that the subdivision itself will require five-foot utility easements along the new properties and a 10-foot in the rear. So that actually would provide access for all utilities to now bring utilities from either another power pole, another source, and bring it into their lots. I don't know how the old lot, and I don't know how, what services off that pole that requires that source still remain. And it's all usually through ComEd.
I appreciate your first statement going, "I don't know," instead of just --
Making up something.
Making it up while you go.
I mean, we could assist and inquire also on our end.
That's what I was suggesting.
But the difficult part is, is that ComEd is going to show what rights they have, and then, of course, they have to prove on their end what rights are not there that constitute them to have that utility at that location.
Okay. That's all.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sharp.
I had a question for the engineer as well. Sorry. I just stay up there. You had said that these requirements for the detention area would have been the same in the original variance request? So there's no change there?
Well, since the original request in 2004, the basin has actually been shown at almost the same size. We've had the same stormwater ordinance, which was created in the 80s, implemented since then. Our stormwater ordinance here in Westmont is actually stricter than DuPage County. So with any subdivision, anytime we are having any kind of development that can impact downstream residents, we have the right to require detention. So with this subdivision, we are requiring detention. There have been times with certain developments where, in our ordinance, we do allow for cash in lieu of stormwater detention. But it's been common practice here in Westmont that, with our engineering staff, that we don't just offer that. They have to have an engineering issue which would constitute justification for paying cash in lieu of. It is not our -- the village spends a lot of money on stormwater management. It's not our priority to just take the cash instead. Our first priority is to install the basins and the stormwater management as required first.
Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to, and maybe this is the planner now, so there's no real substantial difference between this variance request and the one, the original variance request?
It would be the same request.
Okay.
I think that a lot of comparison is done to the lots to the north, which are deeper lots.
Yeah, I was going to say.
And I can't state what the discussions were when the request came the first time. But there is a difference between the ones to the north and what is being requested here.
Okay. I mean, it seems to me that the substantive point of this variance is that it better matches the adjacent lots. And adjacent lots are much deeper, but the lots as proposed are still deeper than the minimum required, just based on area and lot width. And even if you take the detention area, pretend it's not there, you still have a slightly longer lot than is in other places in R3. So by comparison, yeah, it's dramatically less space, but still seems to conform to other lots in the zone. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartel.
Couple of questions. Why were no retention ponds put in when the houses in 507 and 509 were built, the adjacent ones to the north?
I can only assume, I was not the village engineer at that time, but looking at the grades of those properties, it is the highest point is at the rear of the property, and it flows toward Blackhawk Drive. By providing a hole in the back of a detention facility in the back, the difficulty would be trying to get the water that is generated from that site pumped up to that location for only it to flow back to Blackhawk Drive. So essentially, you're creating and spending a significant amount of money on stormwater management for a sump pump pit. That would be my guess. Okay? And that's why detention was waived for those properties. But since then, the village has improved the stormwater through that area by reconstructing Blackhawk, and now has a significant storm sewer system for that area.
Is there a connection with the storm system with the Blackhawk and Ogden problem? The water that accumulates right at the end where the new car dealer is? It seemed, because that never really got resolved, that --
The car dealership that used to be Alpha Motors?
Correct. Now it's Porsche.
That is actually, the parking lot is designed as a detention facility. It is supposed to hold water.
Okay.
So they chose to park cars in a detention facility.
Okay, all right. Well, okay then. It just didn't, it seems like if there's a detention pond that's going to be constructed, just wondering if there isn't a way to get some of that water shunted from there. So it partially solves that problem.
The, I mean, for a development that is a single-family home, they're providing detention for their site, not for the surrounding areas.
Okay.
It would not be fair for us to start bringing all of this water through them and make them do it.
What they do do is contain it on-site and release it into the storm sewer at a restricted rate. So instead of sheet flooding over top of the property, as may exist now during heavy rain events, it will collect and be released slowly and should help out the overall stormwater management in the area.
So more manageable. I see. Okay. I'm supportive. I'm supportive of it. Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner LaVoy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Noriega. I'm glad you're still at the podium. The question that I would have is, a couple of questions related to the letter we received in our packet. And a letter was received from Karen Barnacle. She brought up a couple of points in here about record floods and also information that there's a low spot in her yard. It's adjacent to this particular site. And my question is that the bypass flow, has that been handled correctly?
Well, we have just the preliminary engineering. We actually do not have all the calculations for such.
Okay.
Preliminary just shows the volume can be attained.
Perfect.
So we will, I'll review that letter and then see if there's anything that we can accommodate through and make sure that we're not at least impeding that flow.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the hundred-year bypass is handled, because it says in her letter that her property is lower than this property, and therefore it's not going to, you know, drain through the detention system. But where's the bypass? Is that bypass in a controlled environment so it doesn't flood other properties?
I believe the overflow is toward Blackhawk Drive.
Okay, good. It did also reference a storm event that was within six months that had four to six inches of water for about an hour on the street. And that was not too long ago, according to her letter.
Yeah, we've had, experienced some standing water on Blackhawk Drive when there is a significant dilute that has occurred, that she indicates the four to six inches.
Right, but this application here is only helping the situation in the area to the largest extent that the ordinance would allow.
Correct. So again, it's just for the development. They are restricting the flow. They are holding and detaining the water on-site and releasing it at a controlled rate.
Okay. Good. Thanks for staying. Appreciate you being here. I have no other questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Carmichael.
I have one question for Mr. Hotty. What is that structure at the rear of the property that's in that easement, that detention area? I'm looking at the aerial view, county parcel.
There is an old shed-type thing, which won't be there. I believe that's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
I don't have the aerial view, so.
What it is, but it's a --
I think it's a, yeah, it'll be gone. Yeah, we're cleaning it up, all that type of thing. All the trees back there, it'll all be cleaned up, nice manicured yard, that type of thing.
I appreciate what you're trying to do here, sir. But I really think you're trying to cram two sardines into a one-sardine can. The lot width, the rear yard setback, this significant 55-foot detention is just, it's too much, and I can't support it.
I understand that. Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren.
I've been on this board since the 70s. And that time, the northeast acres had all these 100 by 300 lots, and they were subdivided pretty much at will. Up until the last one, and I'm sorry I can't, I wish Fisher and Anton were still here. He would know. But the last one, 300 feet by 100 feet, was denied strictly on the basis of the lot width. The last request, and that was where it was 300 feet. I don't think water was an issue at that time. It may have been, but it wasn't brought up. I, too, would tend to agree with my fellow commissioner on the lot. By the time you have to put the detention on there, it's not a very usable lot, two lots. Totally.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments and some questions. I also have some concerns about this. We have a much smaller property at 200 feet than the 300 foot, and we're going to take up better than a quarter of it with a detention pond, which is going to leave little room for a backyard for families and kids to enjoy and things like that. There's also not a lot of properties in the area with detention ponds as backyards. And then combined with the narrow width, I think that sets, I don't think it's necessarily in keeping with the neighborhood. I know we have smaller lots directly adjacent to it. I've been down that block 10 times looking at this. And I do appreciate the fact that somebody owns a property and wants to do something with it, because it looks like hell right now. And I think something built there will look a lot better and improve the lot. I look at the homes that were built mid-block in the 400 section, and those were not subdivided, and they look beautiful. And they seem to improve and increase the value of the neighborhood. And I think they have a lot, I think they have a lot to offer to the neighborhood. I just feel that this is cramming too much in. Have you explored a single-family residence on this property? Or have you just gone back to the plan, because that's what it looked like back in 2004?
We've looked at cost, construction costs, and what the cost put into, the cost of buying up property and everything like that. It'd be very, very hard, if not impossible, to recover our costs, trying to do in a single-family right now unless we want to build a million-dollar home, which is out of character. It's, you know, the lots next to them are $600,000, $700,000, whatever. We're trying to build something in that lot area, and we can't do that in that lot and make any money. We'd basically be, lack of anything better to say, kissing our sister. We're not making anything out of it. And that's not profitable. You know, what's the sense in doing that? We need to make a profit. We're not asking for outlandish profit. We're trying to make things work. And it's not just on that street, but you go on Trobey, going east and west, there's lots only 103-foot-deep by 100-foot-wide. That's been split in the last 10, 15 years. And so we're not out of character. We're giving square footage, more square footage than what's required by code, 7,800 square foot. We're at 10,041 square foot. I believe that's roughly, my numbers could be off a little. We're giving more than what we're asking. We're supplying the detention that's required by code. We're doing everything we're asked to do for a subdivision. We're not hurting the neighborhood either. It's not like, it's an improvement for the neighborhood. It's fixing a problem.
I agree with parts of that, but certainly you're entitled to your opinion, of course. Yes, sir, if you'd like to approach? Have you signed in?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
It's not that we're even making money, it's just even to recoup or to make sense of the property to even to move it off the market. Otherwise, really, it can, you cannot put a single home, family, and sell it and be, not even break money or even try to make up some of your money. You can't even move it off the market. So I want to say we're not even trying to make money. We want to just move it. That's all.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I have no further comments. Anything additional from staff or from our village engineer? Any comments?
No, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners? Yes. Commissioner LaVoy, please.
Yes, I'd like to go back to Joe's comments about the variation in relation to density, in relation to other commissioners objecting to the variation request. The variation was approved before on the neighboring properties, correct?
You mean the neighboring properties to the north?
Yes.
I think that the neighboring properties to the north, from my research, were split before this one was approved. This one was approved shortly after the split and construction of those two new homes.
So the criteria has now changed?
No, I think that the homes to the north were split and built, and then they approached, and I might be wrong. You have a better history on the property than I do. That those, they were under, so they were under construction, but the net effect of their construction probably had not been known yet.
Was it over a 14 percent request?
For the homes to the north?
Yeah.
They would have been the same width as this lot?
The depth is different.
But the depth was different. So it would have been a similar percentage request in terms of the variance for the lot width.
They had 300 feet of depth.
Depth. And this one doesn't?
This one has what?
It's much shorter than that, the size of the neighboring property, the lot.
Okay. Everybody got their comments out? All righty. So we have a request for variance here, which means we are going to need a reading of the findings of fact. And will that be you tonight, Joe?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is PZ 17-016, Hotty Enterprises Incorporated, regarding 505 Blackhawk Drive in Westmont. Request for a variance to allow the creation of two lots with substandard lot widths in the R3 single-family detached residence district. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return. It permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations and the district in which it is located. Findings of fact, the existing lot exceeds the minimum lot width and lot area for the R3 district, and the price the property makes redevelopment of the property with one new house economically unfeasible. Remodeling the existing house is not a viable option given its condition. The applicant can only yield a reasonable return if the property is subdivided into two lots and two new houses are built. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Findings of fact, the identical lot split with lot variance was approved in year 2006. with lot variance was approved in year 2006, but the owner did not pursue construction at the time due to the poor economy. The applicant is now seeking identical approvals but is complying with all new stormwater management requirements. Criteria number three, the variation granted will not alter the essential character of locality. Findings of fact, surrounding properties in the intermediate neighborhood contain similar lot widths. Stormwater will be managed through onsite detention. Granting this variance will not alter the essential character of the area.
If you agree with these findings of fact, please raise your hands. We have three. If you disagree with these, please raise your hands. We have four. The findings of fact are not approved by a vote of three to four. I will entertain a motion to approve planning and zoning, item 17-016, Hotty Enterprises, regarding the property located at 505 Black Hawk Drive, for A, a zoning code variance request to allow the creation of two lots with substandard lot widths in the R3 single-family detached residence.
No move?
Second. Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Sharp. Any discussion, comments on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes no. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Carmichael?
No.
And Chairman Pill. Did I... Oh, did I miss Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill.
No. I will entertain a motion for item B, a preliminary plat of subdivision request to split one lot into two buildable lots in the R3 single-family detached residence district.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bartel, second by Commissioner Van Buren. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Carmichael?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes no. And Chairman Pill?
Votes no. So we have conducted the hearing, and our information will be forwarded on to the village board, and they will go ahead and take a look at this. And I think either Joe or Jill will contact you and schedule that up. Appreciate it.
Thank you for consideration for this. Appreciate it. Sorry for the vote, but you understand. I was suggesting or just something off contact a little bit. I issued probably more building permits in this town than probably anybody else. You have signs and whatever, and you got a sign ordinance that you're redoing tonight. I've been studying it a little bit. Not that I'm involved with doing it, but Jill's done a marvelous job. It needed to be done. I tried 23, 25 years ago when I was issuing on the permits to modify our sign code. You need to do it. It needed to be done a long time ago. So what I've watched, what he's done, I'm not saying you can't tweak it or whatever. I don't know enough about that, but should be done, and you need to do something about it because we're antiquated with it, okay? Because I, for 20 years, I issued all the permits here in town. So he did what I've seen a marvelous job. So work with him, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
All righty. Next up, new business, planning and zoning, item 17-017, SKE Property Investments, regarding the property located at 324 South Linden Avenue, Westmont, for the following. A, a zoning code variance request for relief from the minimum lot area for dwelling in the R3 single-family detached residence district. Good evening.
Good evening.
Perhaps you could tell us a little bit about your project, and if you need the overhead, you can put anything up on the overhead if you want to show anything at home.
I don't think anything. It's just a single-family lot. It's undersized, and I want to build a house on it. It's just a vacant piece of property right now, and there's single families on the street. They're all the same size, so yes, that's what it is.
Pretty straightforward. All right. I will go to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what you have before you is a variance request to the minimum lot area. This is an R3 district, so the minimum lot area for this property is 7,800 square feet. I think one of the difference between the previous variance, where we're talking about some substandard lot bulk standard, is this is not a creation of a lot. This is an existing lot that was created many years ago. I don't think there's ever a history of a house being built on this. Actually, the lots directly to the south are similar in size. So before the village can consider issuing a building permit on the property, the applicant must request a variance to the minimum lot size. Lot size is actually 7,425 square feet. It's deficient 395 square feet or 5.1%. I just want to note that there is, and I'll call it awkward, but it's an odd, unimproved alley that runs both behind this and next to this property. The village does have intent someday, and I don't know what someday means, not in the immediate future, but to improve that alley. So one of the requests that will be made when it goes through the permit process is typically they ask for five-foot easements on each side of the property. In this case, there will be a little five-by-five triangle on the rear of the property that they will request just so that if the alley gets improved and trucks need to make that turn because it's kind of a tight radius, that they have the ability to improve the alley to make the turn on that easement. And as always, I am available for any questions.
Are you aware of that, understand, and you concur with that?
Yep.
Okay. Great. I will now open up the public hearing on this. If there's anyone in the public who would like to speak either for or against, please come up to the podium and sign in. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Nick Slensky. I'm a homeowner on the same street. We're 333. And so we've been familiar with the house across the street, and then this vacant lot next to it. It's been kind of sitting there, sort of doing nothing for a while. And we were happy to see somebody buy it, but we're concerned, I guess, for the character of the neighborhood. So there's a number of things. It's a small lot. There's the way that it's set up now, Linden travels straight north and then deadends into Tower Lane, and that deadends at the end. So we have two young girls, and we like that there's not through traffic. There's a lot of people that try and go cut the corner and get to Cass, and we like that they can't do that. So one of my concerns with this is, will it be developed so that there'll be access to Cass? And if so, that's going to be a lot of traffic in the neighborhood, and I would be concerned for my daughter's safety.
You're talking about that alley?
Yeah, yeah. If the alley is developed all the way out over the hill to Cass and even behind the house. So traffic is an issue. How does the alley get developed? And then what does the... What does it look like when drainage and stormwater kind of runs down? This is sort of the highest point in our neighborhood. And right now, it'll wash maybe right down, right down towards me. So I'd be concerned about sort of seeing the plans for handling that and the character of the neighborhood. I don't want a multifamily, but it doesn't sound like it's that. I just don't want a huge house kind of shoved into a small lot that's going to change the look and feel and the character of all these sort of post-war Cape Cod's that are all there and have been there since the 50s. So...
Well, he's not asking for any variances other than the lot size. So his house is going to fit the lot, just like all the rest of yours do.
Okay.
And he has nothing to do with the alley at all. That's strictly the village, and there's nothing on the board. They just want to have a future easement just in case someday they continue that alley, either on his north side or on his west side, which is the back side.
Right.
But for now, there's nothing there.
Okay.
So that part is... There's nothing we can comment. He will not have anything to do with that.
Okay.
The house size, and I don't know if you have drawings and want to put them up there on the board. He has some beautiful drawings and renderings and things like that.
I'd like to see them, if it's public record.
Give me one second.
If you could turn on the overhead again.
There's an example of what the house would look like. Obviously, it's going to be newer than your homes. You can't change that because he's building it now.
Sure.
But it's in the same size structure as the rest of the homes in the area.
It has a bigger feeling. It certainly presents as a bigger house, since all of ours are generally sloped roofs with dormers, and this is garage and, you know, second-story end roof.
You're looking at the...
It just has a feeling of being a bigger house.
I was speaking of the footprint. You're right. The height, the elevation may be a little bigger, but he's certainly well within building code and parameters. And maybe you would want to address the detention by a question.
Well, first I'll address the height. So in that zoning district, it's an R3 district. The maximum height of a house can be 35 feet. Now, we actually measure 35 feet to the midpoint of a sloped roof. So if you have a sloped roof, it's to the midpoint. Now, that is for every home in there. We don't have anything on our code that says that if all the homes are one-story and only 20 feet in height, that it has to be matched. So conversely, if you approached the village and said, "Well, I'd like to build a second story onto my home," we would hold you to the same standard of 35 feet. So Mr. Elliott has built some homes within the village. The home he's proposed would meet the setbacks. And then there's also a lot coverage maximum, so he can't cover more than 35% of the lot.
50%.
So he has not asked for any requests outside of the norm of what we can permit without any additional variances.
So the question of, I guess, the variance here is, the building, the house is going to be a little too close to the existing property, or...
Actually, what it is, is we have a minimum lot size, 7,800 square feet.
Okay.
There are lots that exist in the village that are smaller than that, and those could have been annexed in, and they had been subdivided before they were annexed into the village. They could have been subdivided at a time when we didn't have the rule of 7,800 square feet, because that rule has changed since 1923, since the inception of our zoning code.
Okay.
So basically, this is a requirement to say, well, before we let you build, because it is too small, show us that you can build and that it's a smart build.
Okay. I don't really have any other questions. It's kind of some concerns initially, without having seen any of this, you know, what I was coming as a member of the neighborhood. So thanks for hearing me.
Super. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this subject? Good evening. Make sure you've signed in if you haven't already.
Yeah, I signed in.
Perfect. Thank you.
My name is Fred Rukoff. I live at 24 Tower Lane, which is basically kitty-corner to this empty lot. I've either lived in the house, or my parents have... My parents actually had the house built in 1969 when Tower Lane was constructed. We're the second house on the street. As my neighbor Nick raised some concerns, I had some of the same concerns. So I won't reiterate his questions. A couple of things that I had not thought of, but with the prior discussions heard regarding the water runoff, and also, and I'm also going to backtrack on what I just said, with the character of the neighborhood, that is a concern of mine. But the water runoff is one other concern that I have. Currently, that lot does not have a ditch as to where water off the top of the hill can come down and is really nicely managed, so to speak. And what ends up happening is, in the spring, in the fall, when there are rainstorms, rain will go actually across Tower Lane and come into the yard of my neighbor on 22 Tower Lane. And there's, in the wintertime, when there is some warming, snow melts and that, that becomes rather slick there with people turning around. And I know I've actually replaced my mailbox a couple of times with people just kind of sliding off and going, just plowing right into my mailbox. But I mean, because basically Linden runs or goes right into my driveway. But that's a... Those are the concerns that I have.
Okay.
Yeah, the character of the neighborhood. I'm glad to have seen the plans. Thank you.
And they're available. You could stop into the building department to take a look. They have that stuff on file there, so it's public record.
Wonderful. I appreciate that, sir.
As far as the detention, and I'll let Joe speak on that, but just know that the village is very, very keen on watching detention right now. I mean, we've just borrowed $7 million to complete a lot of projects, and that's not pocket change. So the village is going to be very, very strict on enforcing. So we may not have all the detention stuff here at planning and zoning, but permits won't be issued until they're in compliance with DuPage as well as Westmont stormwater capacity. So I'll let Joe add anything to that.
Not being the engineer, I will try my best. I'm sure that Chris can correct me if I'm terribly wrong.
[laughing]
When it is not a subdivision, it does not invoke the rules, the DuPage County rules, to require a stormwater facility onsite. But our code does still require what are called BMPs, or best management practices, which can include rain gardens, dry wells and such. And then this is the village's opportunity to look at the grading that is occurring in the ditch, because part of that is, the ditch is essentially the storm sewer. It's just above ground in that case. So it is our opportunity to try to correct and remedy anything that is existing there at this point. They will have to submit full engineering plans with their building set, so our engineers will fully review and try to remedy and correct any conditions that need corrected there.
And I wondered, too, when you're describing that, how much of that water is coming out of that alley as opposed to this lot? Because that alley's sitting right on the north. It's running right into Tower Lane.
Yeah. Well, what, at least what I've viewed is, I've seen water, it just comes right down the west side of Linden, and it just comes right across Tower Lane. It's... I mean, it's into my neighbor's front yard, but which goes... And we just, Westmont just replaced, I think it was last year, put a new court, whatever, thing underneath my driveway, and re-blacktopped it and did a nice job. I'm very happy with that. But the... So the water does go through there, but when the, like in the wintertime, when the plows come down, they come and they just make the turn, and snow builds up on either end of Tower. And when that melts, that kind of inhibits things as well. Or it has an effect.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Would anyone else? Yes, sir. Good evening.
My name's Jerry LaBarge. Forty-six years ago, we moved on Tower Lane, and it was a new subdivision. All the homes on Tower Lane were brand-new. And we were the youngest couple in the neighborhood. Now, we're the oldest couple in the neighborhood. And we've seen progress in our neighborhood. And when the people that own that property moved out was a good thing for our neighborhood. But when he did move out, he let that lot go to scrap. So for that lot to get a house on it would improve the neighborhood. We, when we first heard there was a variance, ordinance variance being applied for, everybody got, "Oh, man, they're going to build an apartment building here. They're going to do this. They're going to do that." And then I figured something out. And I thought, "That's a 50-foot lot." And the building Westmont, I think about 20 years ago... And to build in Westmont, I think about twenty years ago, they changed it to a sixty-foot lot. But if you own a hundred-foot lot, and you want to build on that fifty-foot lot, you're grandfathered in. But if you sell that lot to somebody else, that grandfather's gone. And I figured that's why he was coming here, so he could get to build on a fifty-foot lot. And I'm sort of close to what happened. And I'm not worried about that house. It's a beautiful house. When we moved in, all the people on Linden hated us, because we took their beautiful apple trees away. That was an apple, all apple trees and pear trees. And when they finally got to know us, we were accepted. When Page Builders built them two houses at the end of our, one at the end of our street and one behind it, we said, there's, he wanted to put four houses there, which didn't happen. And there's a retention area. But everybody said that house is monstroses, don't fit in the neighborhood. If you come down Tower Lane, you don't even know that house is there. So welcome to our neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I would just state that that's a very nice area back in there. I hadn't been back there before. It's very nice.
Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing, and we will start with Commissioners, and I will begin with Commissioner Sharp.
From what I understand is that any development or improvement on the site that require the same variance, there's not much to be done about the situation. And I think I echo a lot of what the public has said, is that it's much better to have an improved property than a vacant one. This is a small lot. It's actually much smaller than the previous lot that we just discussed. Looking at the plan, and I'm thankful these were provided, it looks sufficient to me. And I appreciate that they're not requesting any further setbacks or variances. So I'm in favor.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartel.
I am also in favor. There's really no way to make the lot bigger, so to be able to fit a house there that's congruent with the neighborhood homes, I think, is reasonable. So I have no further questions or comments. I'm supportive.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes, I have a question for staff.
Yes.
Joe, you mentioned that the alley is going to be improved. What improvements?
It's not that it's going to be improved, it's that our engineering staff, there is already an easement that runs behind some of the properties that are along Cass.
Uh-huh.
They're not continuous. So there are some properties that we have no rights to actually extend an alley through. They would like someday, if they can compile the easements and any dedications that might be needed over time, to improve the alley. There is no set plan at this point, but we would not want to have this come before us without getting the easement that they think they might need someday. So in this case, it's a little five-by-five triangle so that they can make a turn, because it's kind of an awkward little S curve that they have to do.
To turn between the two alleys, the north and the east-west one.
So it is not in the immediate plans to do anything. It's just with this property, they would like to secure that little triangle piece if and when they are able to compile everything they need to get an alley back there.
Okay, where I was going is, is that if this, could this lot ever be considered a corner lot?
Not be, it's only considered a corner lot if it is corner to two streets. Now, Tower does have a little section that's there, but in this case, I would not, in my zoning verification, when they actually submitted to me, I would not consider this a corner lot. Because that is not a street, and you heard one person ask questions about would it ever be continued through to Cass, and I don't think that would ever be the intent. And throughout the village, where we do have alleys, in the situation where the alley is right next to the property, we don't consider it a corner.
Who owns the property to the north of the alley?
There is a small strip of right-of-way, so it would be the village.
So the village owns the strip?
Yeah, it's too narrow at this point. They couldn't get a full sixteen-foot with alley, because there are two properties to the north that their property line comes all the way down. So right now, they can't, they only have eight feet, I think, is what they have. They don't have the full sixteen feet. So it would be a task to get everything that needs to be compiled over time.
Okay.
But there is intent that there should be a service alley through there.
So could that alley be vacated?
In theory, yes. An alley could be vacated. I can't speak for Public Works or Engineering if that would be an option for them to want to vacate it, though.
Okay, but it actually could. That would be another solution opposed to a variation, that alley could be vacated with an easement over it for whatever the village would like to have.
Well, it would need to be vacated, and then I think you'd have to combine it with this property so that it could meet the minimum lot size.
Yeah.
And one of the things is, is, one of the questions I posed to our village engineer is that little five-by-five turning radius, why are we requesting an easement and not a dedication of that little piece? And the response was that they didn't want to prohibit or limit the lot in terms of its lot coverage, which would also be diminished if they gave that piece away, so.
Got it. No further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Carmichael.
Just one point on the water, Fred, that, you know, regardless, water's going to go downhill. But I can see, in the wintertime, the snowplow, snowplow turning the corner and piling up on that alley and everything, it's, that's coming. But regardless if there's a new home there or not, I don't see that changing, so. But notwithstanding, I support the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren.
Yeah, unlike the previous one where we had creating a deficiency, this one is there, and that lot could never be developed without a variance, so I am all for it.
Commissioner Thomas.
I also support it. Maybe plant some apple trees for the neighborhood. Might help you.
My questions have also all been answered. As we have a variance, we'll require a reading of the findings of fact.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is PZ seventeen dash zero-one-seven, SKE Property Investments, regarding three-twenty-four South Linden Avenue in Westmont. Request for variance to allow relief from the minimum lot area requirement for a proposed dwelling in the R-three Single Family Detached Residence District. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. Findings of fact, the property is currently unbuildable due to the substandard lot area. The applicant could not yield any return on its investment without this variance. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Findings of fact, the lot is an existing lot of record which predates the current lot area standards of the zoning ordinance. The applicant did not create this hardship. There is no ability to acquire additional land to increase the lot area. The applicant is meeting all other bulk standards of the R-three district. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Findings of fact, the slot size is consistent with other lot sizes in the immediate area. The proposed new home on this lot should not create adverse stormwater or other impacts on surrounding properties, and the proposed home on this lot is consistent with the existing neighborhood.
Thank you, Joe. If you agree with these findings of fact, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in our agreement. Therefore, I will entertain a motion for Planning and Zoning, item one-seven dash zero-one-seven, SKE Property Investments, regarding the property located at three-twenty-four South Linden Avenue in Westmont. For A, a zoning code variance request for relief from the minimum area for a dwelling in the R-three Single Family Detached Residence District. So moved.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Carmichael, second by Commissioner Bartel. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren, you vote yes, and Chairman Phil?
Yes. Mr. Thomas. Commissioner Thomas.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes, sorry.
Oh, now it's unanimous. Thank you. You have our recommendation, and that will be forwarded on to the Village Board along with our comments, and Joe will let you know when you'll be appearing before the Village Board on an upcoming Thursday. Good luck, and thank you. Planning and zoning, item one-seven dash zero-one-eight, Go Polar Cryotherapy Incorporated, regarding the property located at two-thirty North Cass Avenue in Westmont. For A, a special use permit request to operate a ground-floor health spa in the B-one Limited Business District.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Joanna Gall. My husband, Peter Gall. We currently have a business in Lamont, Illinois. I can give you a little material, might kind of give you an idea of what we do.
I'll take it. I'll cut up the rest up for you.
So what we do is, we do whole-body cryotherapy. It's, I don't know if you guys have ever heard of it, where you freeze your body for three minutes, and it has a lot of health benefits. And we're currently looking to expand, and we're excited to bring it to Westmont. Currently, in Lamont, we bring about thirty people a day. I'm estimating Westmont, we might bring in over sixty a day, easily, so.
Good location, high-traffic area. Just more things, you know, downtown Westmont's a little bit more vibrant than downtown Lamont, so.
And we are a destination business, so people come from all over. Currently, we're in Lamont. People come from the state of Indiana, all over Illinois. So we're looking for, we need a special use due to it not being retail, which we do have retail in our business as well. We do carry supplementation.
Can you just spend a few seconds and tell us a little bit about what your plans for the building might be?
So currently, the plans for the building, we are going to continue doing what we do now, which is cryotherapy, and we're going to do a float center as well. So for the float center, what that is, is you lay in about a foot of water with about thirteen-hundred pounds of absinthe salt, and for an hour. So it's great.
It's a sensory deprivation thing, which helps a lot, you know. There's been recent cases done on PTSD and anxiety and things like that. It's a more natural way of approaching, you know, ways to find stress and just kind of unplug for an hour.
I was referring more, perhaps I misunderstood or didn't say it right. Your plans for the building itself, would there be some construction? There's tenants in the building right now. Could you maybe just address those items?
Yes, there's a current tenant that's on a month-to-month lease, which will be moving out. Should be given a proper amount of time to move out. And the current, the construction of the building, the cryotherapy side, it wouldn't be anything except a bunch of changing rooms, which isn't any major supporting walls, anything like that. The other side, the float center, there would be some construction of rooms, additional rooms.
Plumbing.
And plumbing, and we obviously know we would have to go through, you know, permits for the plumbing and update the fire system and things of that nature. We've also done many improvements to the building that we are currently at.
And we are acquiring this building as well.
Reading my mind, okay. Great. All right. Anything else you want to add or tell us about, or?
No, I mean, we just love to bring the business to Westmont and bring people in to experience Westmont.
Great. I'll open it up to staff first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what's before his request for a special use for the Go Polar Cryotherapy? It's a ground-floor health spa. If you remember, we do have exceptions for uses like this. If they are under a thousand square feet, then they don't need to request a special use. In this case, it is more than a thousand square feet, so they do need to request a special use. Whenever someone, a new occupant or a tenant is moving into a building, we also look at parking requirements. In this case, the parking requirements, it would require four off-street parking spaces. This property actually has eight off-street parking spaces, so it exceeds the minimum. There is off-street parking in front of the building as well. And then I just wanted to note that it is in the Tiff District. It is in our downtown. And what I do want to point out, that it is north of Norfolk Street, which in our comprehensive plan, and I did, in your notes, I did underline and kind of bold it, that it is an area where service uses are part of the encouraged. So whereas below Norfolk Street, it is strictly commercial that is encouraged, it is in a district, or at least in a subsection, where it is more of a transitional area where more service uses, and actually, I think even residential is kind of encouraged in this area. As always, I can't answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you very much, Joe. I will open up the public hearing on this. Is there anyone here in the public who would like to speak either for or against this? Last chance. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we will begin with Commissioner Bartel.
It sounds interesting, not something I know a whole lot about, so it was interesting to read about it and learn a little bit about it. It sounds like it meets all the special use requirements. There's no parking issues, apparently. The treatments were somewhat explained. The only question I have is the water, anytime there's large bodies of water, is there any, do you have cleaning standards in place?
Yes, the health department, we will work with the tank manufacturers.
I was just going to ask, is the health department involved? Okay.
Yeah, we work with the tank manufacturers that we're going to purchase tanks from, and they'll basically, you know, help us with the step-by-step process. And the tanks are so advanced now, that honestly, it's very easy, you know, to, there's filtration system in the back that filters it, there's an ozone system that basically purifies the water, so it's very sanitary and very clean.
And you'll have periodic measurements of that?
Yes. It's electronic, they've done on the actual tanks, that show you the pH of the water and how much salt you have in there and other things.
And you keep records in the case of public health?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm a nurse, and so my interest is in the public health piece of that, and how people can continue to be safe, because you'll have different people in the water.
Yes, absolutely. Absinthe salt, it's about thirteen-hundred pounds of absinthe salt, low-volume body of water, that alone kills a very high percentage of the germs.
Of course.
And then, yeah, and then you have other, you know, treatment systems, double filters on these tanks, ozone system, so it's pretty much a hundred percent sterile.
And it's nothing new. There's float spas all over the country and the world.
Yeah, this isn't, you know, anything too innovative. There's very many of them already around.
You're bringing, you're just having another site for your business.
Correct. We're expanding to add that service, because we don't have the room in Lamont.
And you've acquired the building? You've purchased?
We're in the process. It's contingent due to today's, to the hearing.
Okay, okay. All right. No more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes, is there any licensure requirements for your operators that are in the building?
No, because we do not, we're not, we don't touch anybody. Basically, there's, the state of Illinois does not regulate the cryotherapy.
We've already been certified for the cryotherapy.
Well, as far as the cryotherapy, or do you mean with the state?
Overall. I was going to ask you about the state, yes, local health department.
We are certified to run, obviously, we've been in business a year and a half in Lamont.
Okay, was, is it regulated by the Department of Health?
No. Not currently, not the portion that we're doing in Lamont. I'm assuming the portion with the float will be.
Yes, the float, the portion with the float things will be. And like I said, the tank manufacturers are paying a pretty good amount of money for this. They'll take you step-by-step through the process of what you need to do and everything they require. And they'll train you on the equipment, how to run it, how to properly clean it and maintain it.
Is it, when you say it's all over the country, do other health departments regulate it?
I did not inquire. Well, I didn't ask.
Yeah, you know, every city, every village is different, but yeah, the other places, they are regulated by the health departments.
Okay.
There's currently one, the closest one is in Naperville and in Chicago.
Okay. Jumping onto a different topic, is there a retail component?
Yes.
There is?
We sell supplements. It's a specific brand of supplements that are, you know, that are basically earth-grown. Everything's natural, and it's going as fast as, you know, selling supplements companies in the world.
That wasn't really included on the staff report, I don't think, anyway. Was this something that would be an additional variation, or not?
No, it's a permitted.
It's permitted.
It's encouraged to have retailers.
I know. That was really where my bulk of my questions were, as far as retail sales and how the percentages of downtown are now transitioning to, out of that category, if you will, and, you know, are we looking at some sort of criteria, some sort of matrix to determine what is the correct balance?
I feel like that's changing pretty much every day with the
It is.
...changing demographics of retail, so it's something that we've been balancing. That's why we encourage the special use to be eliminated for businesses under a thousand square feet, and then we're taking each one as a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Joe. I have no further questions.
Good. Thank you very much. Commissioner Carmichael.
I have no questions. Sounds interesting.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren.
This is obviously a franchise.
No. Go Polar is ours.
Who's yours?
Correct. Every aspect of the business.
Okay, and the equipment?
That is, we purchase through a distributor of the equipment.
I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas.
I don't know where I'm going to get my vacuum cleaner fixed now, but, I'll let you know. Welcome.
Thank you.
And good luck, because you look like, it seems that it's something you enjoy and can be of a positive effect on people. And I hope you sell items and draw some people into this, into the town, into the village.
Commissioner Sharp.
Yeah, I've also never done cryotherapy, and it sounds painful.
It's not. It's not bad.
I would love to give it a try. So I, I'm in favor of the proposal. I think that it's great to have another successful business in our downtown. And I think that in this Norfolk's, you know, north of Norfolk Street is a better place for this. So I think it's fitting. And I think to Lavoy's, Commissioner Lavoy's question earlier, I think it is going to change on a daily basis, the balance. And I think that we need to all be aware of what's our, what's in our downtown at the moment and what are in our street, our storefronts. I think there's, there's plenty of space to welcome you guys to our village. I do have a question on the building, though. Are you planning any exterior improvements to the facade?
No, I mean, honestly, I would like to paint, for example, the front of the building to make it look nice and, you know, and go through the process of doing that and kind of make it look tip-top.
It is, it is a nice-looking building for our downtown.
We do attract, we try, if you look at our location, I mean, we try to make it look high-end. But this is our, you know, it's our investment. It's our building.
Right.
It's representing us, and we take pride in what we do.
So I would just encourage you to also check with the village, because I think we do have a grant program for facade improvement.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
There might be other opportunities as well. So I would just encourage you to check. And other than that, thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So what would the hours be for this facility? Would they be similar to this?
Correct.
Yes.
They might be extended by an hour in the evening because of the float. Most people like, some people like to do it after work to relax. So it might be an hour extension, but that's, you know, depending on how business goes.
Okay. You mentioned that you're seeing about thirty customers a day in Lamont.
Correct.
And they're coming from as far as Indiana and all over.
Southern Illinois.
So do you anticipate a loss in revenue there if this facility opens? In other words, anyone who's coming from the north or the west, it would be easier to go to Westmont, I would think.
Well, we own the building in Lamont as well, so we really-
It'd be a very easy transition for us to basically just rent the building out if we had to. It's, you know, it's-
But we do have a big base also in Lamont.
Since the beginning, we wanted to do something bigger. It's just there was no opportunities available for a larger building.
But for now, you're planning on keeping Lamont open?
Absolutely. We will have, this will be our second location.
Okay. In Lamont, do you currently do float therapy? I'm guessing no.
No, we don't have the room.
So that's the expansion part, part of this question also. And that's where DuPage Health gets involved then?
Yes.
Okay. You referenced the, one of the closest ones in Naperville. Is that the Salt Cave?
No, it's Anisha Float Club.
Okay.
Anika.
I don't know where that's at.
They're on fifty-nine by that city center. They're kind of in that area, fifty-nine and-
By Topgolf.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions, and I too am supportive of this. Seeing as we have a special use, we will need a reading of the findings of fact.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is PZ seventeen dash zero-one-eight, Go Polar Cryotherapy Incorporated, regarding two-thirty North Cass Avenue, Westmont. Request for a special use to allow a ground floor health spa in the B1 Limited Business District. Criteria number one, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Findings of fact, this use will be conducted completely indoors and will not result in any adverse noise, light, traffic, or odors. No hazardous products will be used. The spa will use, the spa use will not otherwise endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair the property values within the neighborhood. Findings of fact, the use will occupy an existing building and the use will be conducted completely indoors. This use will not adversely impact surrounding properties. Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Findings of fact, surrounding properties are fully developed and this use will not adversely impact any proposed redevelopment plans. Criteria number four, that adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Findings of fact, the property is currently served by all necessary utilities, accessways, and other necessary facilities. The applicant will install a new fire sprinkler system. Criteria number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Findings of fact, the property contains sufficient off-street parking, and there is available public parking located in the immediate vicinity. Customer visits will be of a short duration, and this use will not cause traffic congestion. Criteria number six, that the special use shall in all the, all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. Findings of fact, the use conforms to all other regulations of the B1 Limited Business District, and no variances are needed.
Thank you, Joe. If you agree with these findings of fact, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in our agreement. I will entertain a motion for item, planning and zoning item PZ one-seven dash zero-one-eight, Go Polar Cryotherapy, Inc., regarding property located at two-thirty North Cass Avenue, Westmont, for A, a special use permit request to operate a ground floor health spa in the B1 Limited Business District.
So moved. Second?
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, second by Commissioner Thomas. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Hill?
Yes. You have our recommendation. That will be forwarded on to the village board along with our comments. And Joe will contact you and let you know when you'll appear at that village board meeting. It will be on a Thursday night.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good luck and welcome.
Thanks.
Continuing on with planning and zoning item one-seven dash zero-one-nine, Westmont B Imports Incorporated and Camera LLC, regarding the properties located at four-thirty East Ogden Avenue, six-fifty-one Westmont Drive, and four-thirty-three Plaza Drive in Westmont for the following: A, site and landscaping plan approval to allow for detention pond expansion in the B-two General Business and M Manufacturing Districts. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Sean McGovern. I'm with Spacero. We're the engineer for the project. We're seeking a site plan and site and landscape plan approval for the, moving the detention pond expansion to the adjacent property. There's an existing detention pond on that property, which the storage in that pond is going to be incorporated into the proposed pond. And all, all the storage from that property is going to be accounted for in that pond as well. And the pond also accounts for a future parking lot, which is going to be sometime down the road. So that impervious area will be accounted for in that pond as well. And with this new schematic, it actually improves the maintenance for both, now that that existing pond is going to be consolidated into the new pond, the maintenance will be vastly improved going forward.
Where was the parking lot located?
The future parking lot?
Yes.
There's no plan for that as it stands. It's just sometime, it's something that they want to keep in mind for the future, because they want to have as many cars there as possible. So if they have the opportunity to provide parking along, it would, it would be between the existing building on the adjacent property and the new pond.
Got it. Okay. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what's before you is a site and landscaping plan approval request. So if you remember, the BMW project, which is kind of a campus now in consolidation of many multiple properties, proposed a pond where six-fifty-one, which used to be the office building, would go. Four-thirty-three, which is where Westmont Body Works is, has a pond that they would be building right up next to, so you would end up with pond next to pond. That is under separate ownership. And actually, when this was under development, I know there were discussions between the two owners about some sort of combination that never solidified. And actually, I think four-thirty-three, the building that has Westmont Body Works many years ago, got some sort of approval on an expansion of that building, and it would have required undergrounding that detention. That never went forward. So the request is to put the, basically expand BMW's pond a little bit onto their property, and we would require easements through the permitting process. And that will account for the detention, not only that's in that pond now, but also give the owners of four-thirty-three some options in the future, which they will have to then re-approach us for a site and landscaping approval for that, whether it's a parking lot, whether it's an expansion of the building. They would still need to come back before us for a separate site and landscaping approval.
But they'll be meeting detention as it's written today?
Correct. And even, even if and when they did approach us, I have no doubts that the current engineering standard of that day would be measured against what is actually provided at that point. The, that project is not before us, so it has not been reviewed. All that's been reviewed by our engineering consultant is the volumes required for this kind of consolidation and new, new volume that is anticipated. And as always, I have available for any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. I will open up the public hearing on this. Would anyone like to come up and either speak for or against this particular subject? We're getting a little thinner out there. I'm not seeing a lot of motion. All righty. Come on, Rick.
We're exhausted for being here so long.
All right. We will close the public hearing on this, and we will begin with Commissioner Lavoy.
Great. I just had a few questions. I noticed that, obviously, as part of the plan set, you were not approving the existing disturbed detention pond. And is there going to be an interim plan until an applicant or the neighboring property owner comes forward with a petition?
Yeah. So the existing pond that's there now and the adjacent property is going to be filled in, so that basically from the existing building sloping down towards the new, larger pond, it's just going to be sheet flowed off. So that if they do come back in the future, it, it's basically filled so that they could, they could build there.
Okay. For some reason, filling in detention ponds just doesn't swing, you know, it doesn't sit well, I guess. But the volume has been increased, and it meets the ordinance requirements.
Correct.
The overflow is the same?
Mm-hmm.
I happened to notice on the GIS system for the county that's listed as a wetland on the map, but I've since got information from the village engineers suggesting that that is not the case. You would not have to mitigate that. Is that correct?
Right. Yeah, that's correct. We actually met with Mike and Noria. We sat with the county the first time through the original plan, and they deemed it not a wetland. For some reason, it was marked as a wetland on the GIS system, but the county went out and did, did a study, and they deemed it not, not an existing wetland.
Is that area contained within the bypass flow?
I, yes.
So anything that would be filled, anything that's going to be there, that, that flow would have to be maintained?
Yes. So there are storm, storm sewer implemented in this plan to route any of that bypass into the current proposed detention.
A future use of that particular lot that's the detention pond now, that would have to be maintained with overflow as well, correct?
Correct.
So you're not, if not, you're not accommodating bypass flow for off-site tributary area?
No, they are.
You are?
Anything that was a tributary to four-through-three Plaza Drive is being conveyed. That was previously off-site.
As a bypass around the pond, or is, is it routed through?
It goes through the pond.
Did that increase the release dramatically or not?
I don't believe so. Personally, I didn't work on the calculations for that. But I know that with this new pond design, it takes into account even the impervious area for the future parking. So it didn't drastically increase it. The depth of the pond actually didn't change. It just got wider. So the release rate was not drastically changed.
Okay. So, but the bypass is going through the pond?
Yes.
Okay, which means that volume of water from other properties that are tributary are filling up that pond, correct?
Correct. It was, well, that was previously going through the existing pond.
Okay.
So that was all taken into account in the, the new pond.
Okay. But you're not, you're not, the release of that is not with the short storm events, correct?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
The, the, what I'm saying is, is just for, for the board to, to understand this conversation a little more, is that if we have off-site tributary flow above and beyond their site, okay, if it's routed through the pond, okay, that means that the release is larger. So if I have to release, if there's so much water coming from an off-site area, which there is in this particular case, the, the release that gets routed through the pond doesn't attenuate small, short storm events, because all of it gets released. So I'd like to see the release go, get bypassed.
Okay.
For the tributary flow.
Mm-hmm.
Because then you're just not attenuating the short storm events, because the pipe has to be larger in the pond to release the tributary flow that's not being mitigated as far as in the detention pond.
Well, I, I don't think that's, I don't see why that would be the case, because the pond has been made bigger to accommodate this, which is right adjacent to it.
It has nothing to do with the size of the pond.
But then the, the restriction can still be the same.
If the, if the water coming from off-site contributes to that release, the release is then larger than the most restrictive rate that you're talking. So I'm just asking if the bypass flow is being routed through or around the pond because of the release of the water. I don't want to see the release of the water increase just because of the bypass flow. That's the point.
I'd have to defer to staff then. I don't know. And you may not know either. That may be an engineering question.
So if you, if you want to look at that, the way, the way that the bypass is done and work it out with the engineer would be fine?
Yeah, we're actually going through engineering comments with the village.
I spoke to the village engineer about that issue today, and also about the, the wetland issue. And so I did some investigation on it, and it appears to be fine. There's a neighboring property, too, that the flow, the bypass flow goes to the north into Oakwood. So it's, it's something that would be concern to the residents as well. But with that, it's a good project. The consolidation of a pond is a good thing. I'd like to see it, because you really can't do much with that strip that's going to be there, I'd like to see it handled more of a regional-type approach, because when you look, you could put this up, Joe, if you want. If you look at the, the, the area, the GIS mapping of the area now versus where it was when that pond existed a long time ago, I got the record mapping back to nineteen eighty-eight. But when you look at that, there was a lot of, of properties that were along Ogden, that's in this area, that didn't provide any detention. So what we're saying is, we're taking a lot, and we're consolidating. Yes, we're providing detention to meet the ordinance requirements, yet we leave a strip of land that could really help out from a, from a regional perspective of handling more stormwater than, than just what's required, just for the fact of what's there already. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
So there is an argument to, to maintain and incorporate the existing pond in its entirety of even the way it exists today to handle stormwater, because both the areas that are tributary to this never provided it. So it would be an overall benefit to the community if we maintained, you know, that and increased that size to handle that because of this issue. Because, you know, the tributary areas, they just didn't have detention. No ordinance is adequate, as you know, to today's standards.
Right.
So would that be a consideration of the applicant to incorporate that?
Yeah, that's certainly something we can take into account. I'd have to speak with the, the owner, of course, and the PE on the project. But that's certainly something we can-
But you understand my comments, that we're taking this, and then we're excluding the strip, and the pond could be bigger for a benefit for properties that drain towards it that never provided detention.
If the owner's willing to do that.
If the owner's willing to do that, because that strip is so small. That would be my request, yeah, to staff to, to work through that issue. Other than that, I have no further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Carmichael.
I understood this issue till I listened to two engineers start talking about it.
[laughing]
Sorry, Dave. And, no, I, I have no problems with this at all, it seems. I, there's no legal problem with the detention straddling a property line, and that would have really been my only question, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren.
My concern is that you meet the, our engineering requirements on it. And if Commissioner Lavoy's suggestion could be helpful at something, it could be taken into consideration. But if so, it probably would mean they would have to come back?
Uh, no, I mean, would, if they expand the size, yeah, probably, if they're taking up new property.
Or be taking up the existing pond? Well, be taking up the existing pond and incorporating that as part of it to provide storage for properties that never provided it. So it's an overall benefit to the people to the north, instead of bypassing all that flow through, we have the capacity, we have the ability to incorporate that, make it bigger and a benefit for all and not really adding cost to the applicant at all. It's just an earthwork exercise, and if you put the berm here or you put it there.
You say it's not a cost to the applicant, but this would mean re-engineering drawings?
Yeah.
And it would mean, if you're combining, are you going into property combinations?
True.
Were you having to?
Not, there would not be a consolidation of lots, if that's what you're asking, no.
No, no.
Just be an easement over any property lines?
Yeah. Okay, well, I defer to.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas?
You've given me a headache also.
I'm sorry.
No, I support the project, no question.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I'm still just trying to get my head around the basic concept here, so the idea is the detention for BMW, I'm guessing probably couldn't quite fit in their lot, so they needed to, need to expand a little bit into the adjacent lot, they already have one, so let's combine it and make it bigger, and it works for both parties generally?
The detention was adequate for the project that's going on now, that was previously approved, but they're just combining the existing pond to the adjacent site into the pond, making it bigger so that in the future, if they do want to add anything to that site, it's already accounted for in this pond rather than coming back and doing additional work to the pond.
Okay, so the adjacent lot would have some kind of easement, saying that they have so much dedicated stormwater detention that's in this other property, and presumably there's extra, is what I'm gathering, there's talk that now they can expand more and have more hard surface in their lot now that they have a larger detention area, is that because there's extra space in this pond right now?
As it's proposed.
That would be able to accommodate future expansion of that property?
Correct.
And all of that would get found in legal agreements between the two owners? Okay. And the maintenance would have to be in agreement between the two owners?
Correct.
Okay, I don't think I have any other questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartel.
I'm supportive of the project. I think I understand all that's involved with it, and I give my support. As an aside, I'm glad to see the ESI consultants for the first time dating their documents, and it helps in terms of timelines, so I appreciate that.
And I too am supportive of the project. I have no further comments, everything that I would have brought up has been brought up already. Any other sort of last call for commissioners on comments or staff? We have no need for a reading of findings of fact on this as no variance or special use is requested. Therefore, I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item 17-019 Westmont BM Ports Incorporated and Camera LLC regarding the properties located at 430 East Ogden Avenue, 651 Westmont Drive, and 433 Plaza Drive in Westmont for the following: A, site and landscaping plan approval to allow for detention pond expansion in the B2 general business and M manufacturing districts.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bartel, second by Commissioner Sharp. Comments or questions on the motion? Hearing non, roll call please.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Pell?
Votes yes. You have our recommendation that will be forwarded on along with our comments to the village board, and Joe will contact you as to when that will be scheduled, it'll be on a Thursday night. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Best of luck. Alrighty, last but not least, planning and zoning item 17-020, the Village of Westmont regarding a zoning code text amendment for signed regulations as follows. A, amend appendix A, Article 11 of the Westmont Zoning Code regarding the amendments to the Village of Westmont Sign Code.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Our applicant, thank you.
I request the doors be locked.
This is usually where the applicant brings refreshments.
I thank everyone for showing up tonight, this has been over a year-long process to get it to this point. For those of you that have seen portions of my presentation, I apologize, but I think that in this realm I should kind of cover everything. Unfortunately, there is 11 pages of code that we're going to be discussing. I won't discuss every nuance, that's why I provided to you in your packets both the original sign code and the proposed sign code. If I stray, just let me know. If I get confusing, just let me know. I'm happy to discuss signs all night.
Oh, well.
If I can get the computer up on the screen? Okay. So, the sign ordinance text amendments. I've been with the village three and a half years now, and I've been dealing with the sign code since I've started, so basically every sign permit that comes through the village comes through me. Our sign code is a bit confusing, and I hope you were able to get confused when you read through our sign code, the original sign code. And it's really a product of changes over time and changes not comprehensive, little tweaks here, little tweaks there. Chances are, like most of our zoning code, we copied and pasted from other communities, and just over time, we've kind of changed things to fit our community best. Unfortunately, what's happened is it's created disconnects, it's created things that don't work with one another, it creates complete areas that do not match, and when you try to read it, depending on which section you start and which section you end in, you can end up with a very different answer of how much signage you're allowed to have. So the origin of this text amendment was, let's try to make this a bit readable, bring things in line, and get a more comprehensive look at it. So as I explained, the intent is that we look at our existing sign code, look at other neighborhood comparable communities, which before we ever propose any kind of zoning text amendment, we always look to see how we compare to neighboring communities. What we don't want to do is fall too far out of line with what other communities are doing so that we start actually affecting business and whether or not business wants to locate within our village. So looking at all this with our strategic plan, with our comprehensive plan, how can we propose some changes to this? And this shot is a good example of what exists in our village right now. We have lots of different signage that's going on, lots of temporary signage, lots of A-frames, lots of existing signs, signs on vehicles, which can, when you compile them over one another, is not an attractive vision of our village, particularly to corridor plans where we're trying to beautify in terms of the corridors through the village. So what's the process that staff's done? So first is analyze the existing code to determine what works, what can be deleted, what should be added. Look to the neighbor communities to formulate the changes, and what I want to stress is that we are looking at an emphasis of the existing signage allowances to create incentives and encourage better design. This was not what I would call a complete blow-up of the sign code, which typically you involve a consultant, typically takes a year, two years. This is staff trying to make improvements incrementally in this change. And then be somewhat visible and transparent to the community through the process. Once I've compiled the changes that do need to occur, test the proposals. One of the tests is I will ask you if you were less confused with the new code, you don't have to answer me right now. Test the proposals to see if it works with our corridor plans, our comprehensive plans, commercial design guidelines, and then finally is implement those changes. So this is part of that process of implementing those changes. So the analysis that I did is I looked at how can it be improved? So a few simple ways is update, improve the code language, address some more current trends, clarify some of the language, eliminate where staff is doing interpretations. Unfortunately, the way the current code reads, it leaves a lot of things open to interpretation, and I think Jill can attest that when you read through our sign code, depending on the way you read it and the mood you may be in, you may figure out that, well, hey, I never thought about it this way, maybe I've been doing this wrong all along. That occurs quite often. We want to correct and eliminate the conflicting text, we want to organize it into a better structure, we'll look at additions into some signage, including one new type of signage I'll be proposing tonight, and then what deletions can occur in there. So I'm giving some examples of each of those processes, so here's an example of why we need to update it. One of the things that we list in our code is time and temperature devices, which were popular probably 20 or 30 years ago, every bank had a time and temperature device. That's really ebbed into what we call electronic message board signs. So we don't need language in here for something that is somewhat outdated. Clarifying, so here's an example of where we had a specific section of code that called out the B3 district, and we said, well, if you can't see the signs, then we don't care. That conflicts with other areas of the code where we say we do care. So trying to clarify why this is here, understand why this is here, and in this case, this particular clause, it was a deletion when we did get through the process. Correction, if you read in one section of our sign code, it says temporary signs are allowed to, you're allowed to display a temporary sign with a permit up to 45 days a year, and then you go into a separate section and it says you're allowed to do it 60 days per year. Well, what has staff been operating on? Staff has to operate on the most relaxed because it's stated, I'm sure John would tell me that you can argue it the other way, but staff has always interpreted the 60 days. That is what we will be codifying with this, is we are still proposing the 60 days. The intent of the sign code was only to make revisions to what is existing when we have to or when there is a desire to create an improvement. 60 days was fairly consistent, I'll show you a chart with that. So the discussion of whether 45 days was right or 60 days was right was not something that I looked into, I was not looking at making it more restrictive. So 60 days is what we stuck with. This slide is not intended for anyone to read it. If you look at the yellow versus the white, we have temporary signs discussed in separate, 17 separate sections of the code. So all I did is I took the nine or 11 pages of code that exist, put it all on one page, highlighted the 17 separate sections. That's a little bit confusing when you're trying to wade through what kind of temporary sign can I have? So there's a lot of organization that went through in this process. So what are some of the additions that staff was looking at? Looking at sign types, individual letter signs versus box signs, looking at temporary signs, monument signs and pole signs, projecting signs, which are the ones that would go above a sidewalk, looking at the project and building types. So if you muddled through the code and you actually got through the long chart that was in there and the footnotes, that is where you find rules on how you do signage on a shopping center. That's really not the right place to do it, it's not the footnote that should do it, it should be defined in code. Same goes for office complexes and outlots. So looking at all this and seeing where we can add to the code to make it higher quality. Looking at deletions, one of the things here is, for some reason in our code, it actually defines permit costs for the sign code in the sign section. It does not, it is a building permit. We have a whole separate subsection of building permits, so why are we defining signs as something different? It actually lists a $5 per square foot of the sign face area, a minimum fee, and then it also lists, and I'll discuss this a little bit further later, a $250 annual fee. I checked with finance and with Spencer, and we have never collected a $250 check from every business in the village annually to renew their sign permit every year. So that is another deletion that we'll be looking at. Just as a comparison, all the numbers with the communities that I looked at, that is the number of pages of text that each community has for signs. We were the lowest at nine, Glen Ellen was the highest at 55. There's a lot of discussion versus overregulation and underregulation. This is really just to illustrate that maybe we're underregulating a bit and have not given the sign code the attention that it needs in order to develop it to a level at least comparable with other communities. I think the text that I am finally proposing just goes on to page 12, so we're still at the very bottom in terms of development. And once again, this is more of a reorganization, not a complete rewrite of our sign code. So I want to give some kind of quick examples so that everyone in the room can understand what staff has to go through on a regular basis. So I've used this before, so I apologize if you've seen it. So basically, someone approaches me and calls me on the phone and says, Joe, I have a commercial property, how much signage can I have? And I say, well, okay. I figure out that they're in the C1 commercial business district. Well, the first issue is that if you look at our code, nowhere in our code does it say C1 business district sign provisions. It has our B1, it has our B2, it has our B3. Somewhere along the line, someone forgot to say that the sign code is applicable to the C1. So what does staff do? It makes an interpretation and says, well, C1 is a bit more commercial than the B2, so we'll use the B2 standards. So in this case, I've got a building width of 50 feet and a lot width of 125 feet. So Joe, why are you throwing numbers about lots and sizes? The way that we calculate sign code in the village is somewhat uniform to other communities as well. Not every community does it the same, but basically we say, well, how wide is your building or how wide is the least space in an inline strip mall? And that helps us determine how much signage you can have. So in this case, the building is 50 feet wide, and I use the code and I go in and it says that they're allowed to have two square feet per lineal foot of building facade. So if you're 50 feet wide, you're permitted to have 100 square feet of signage. Now, I'll go into it a little bit later, it gets a little more confusing the way our code works, it says that you can split that, so if there's a sign in front of the building, what we call a ground sign, you can split that, but the ultimate amount of signage you're allowed to have as a business is 100 square feet. And keep in mind, this would be any business that's in a retail strip mall. So I've leased 50-foot width. And then they say, oh, Joe, I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you that I'm a corner lot. I'm like, okay, well, unfortunately I had to flip through the pages and say corner lots are a different condition. The way the code reads, it says that a corner lot is 1.5 times, not two times, 1.5 times the longest side you have. So in this case, they front to a major street which is 50 feet, and they front to a minor street which is 30 feet. So what's the longest side? It's 50. I take one and a half times that, and I say, well, you're allowed 75 square feet of signage. So here's the question that I pose is, don't businesses typically lease and pay higher rents for corner properties because they can have more signage? Don't most approach us for variances saying, I need another sign that faces the other street? So why does our sign code actually permit them less signage than the inline tenant that we used as the previous example? So that was one of the conflicts that we saw through our sign code. But now I'm going to make it even a little bit harder on you, or harder on staff, because this is what we do on a daily basis. Oh, I'm a corner lot and I forgot to say I'm a gas station. Okay, well, gas stations are a complete separate classification, we classify that as open sales lots. Open sales lots are gas stations and dealerships for the most part. It's where they don't have a lot of building, but they have a lot of lot, and we're penalizing them for a real little building on a big lot if we're using how much, how wide the building is. So the code for that says that it's dependent on the lot width, and it says it's half of the lot width. Well, this lot is 125 feet wide, so a gas station is only permitted 62.5 square feet of signage. I would argue that every gas station within our village and every village throughout the western suburbs, they have the most signage of any business in a commercial district because that's what they require for their business model, that's what they request. Most of the gas stations we have in the village have obtained variances for the amount of signage that they have. So this is kind of an illustration of what staff goes through on a regular basis and why you get into interpretation of the sign code, which is not comfortable for staff. We would rather be able to point to something and say, that's exactly what you can have, it's written right there. So what are the proposed amendments? So what are the proposed amendments? One of the first things we're going to propose, I touched on fees a little bit, and so I'm going to give you a real quick example. So basically, we're saying that we'd rather not regulate fees in the sign code. We would rather just reference the building code. Building code over time upstates their fees. The current structure that they work with is a 1.5% of the cost of the project. So if it's a really cheap sign, it would be a really low permit. If it's a really expensive sign, it would be a higher permit based on that. It would not be dependent on the size of the sign as it is now. So I'll give you an example. So the current fee structure is to the left there. It's $5 per square foot, and there are other fees associated with it, inspection fees, review fees, but this is just the base that I'm working here. So as it's defined, and I took a sign permit that came through recently, and it was 126 square feet of signage being proposed, and the cost was $23,000. So you say, "Well, that's an expensive sign for 126,000, or 126 square feet." That's because it was a monument sign, a brick and stone, and it was pretty and it was nice. So the permit fee, under our current structure, we just would do it based on the 126 square feet, we would charge for the permit fee just over $1,000. If you did it based as a percentage of the cost of the project, it actually reduces the fee down to $818. 20% reduction. I'm not looking at this as, "How do I reduce fees?" This is just an added benefit of the fact that our old calculation method maybe wasn't taking the right things into account. And the example, the next example we'll give you where staff typically has, I'm going to call it an argument, it's not always an argument, but a discussion about permit fees. And that is when you're doing a panel change. A lot of the sign, the sign permits that we get is there's an existing sign structure, whether it's freestanding or on the building, and it's a sign. I may be spending $100 to pay a sign company to come and change that. That's, that would be the same permit fee as if I was taking the sign down, spending a lot of money to do a new one. It's independent of those things. So here's the other example I give is, so I basically took the same 126 square feet and said, "Well, they're only doing change outs on the sign panels, and it's actually only a $1,500 job." Under our current sign structure, or our fee structure, that $1,500 job would still be feed out at $855 because it's still by a square feet per the sign. The only difference in the cost between the thousand before and this is I took out the electric fees because the assumption is if you're changing out a panel, there is no electric part of the permit. The new structure would actually bring that cost of a permit down to 348 or a 60% reduction. So although fees were not the intent of this, we do want to clean that up, and it is a benefit to the business community. So I'm going to move on to nonconforming signs. One of the biggest, we've taken this, and I'll give you a list of all the meetings that we've taken this through. We've had two significant meetings, one with the Downtown Westmont Business Alliance and one with the actual business community. We actually had that one here, and we had a very good turnout, and I see some of the same faces here tonight. We did listen to everyone, and although I can't accommodate all the requests, one of the big things, the discussion points was, "Well, Joe, I've got a sign, and it seems like your new sign code is going to tell me my sign is not any good anymore. Can I keep it? Do I have to change it?" There is a general fear, I think, that we were looking at the intent of what happened in Downers Grove, which Downers Grove came out with new, more restrictive signs, and if you paid attention on Downers Grove, every business over there either had to reduce the size of the sign on their buildings, or they have reduced their ground signs to about this tall and this big, and they had to do it by a date. And that was independent if they wanted to change their sign or not. That is not the way we're operating. Our current code doesn't have a lot of nonconformity language in it. We have nonconformity language in our zoning code. So depending on where you look in our code, it can be as little as 10 days to three months once the village either notifies you or the business goes out of business that the sign is supposed to be removed. There's lots of signs that, businesses that have gone out of business that are still there. The village is not really in the business of running after a business after it's left town. We would like everyone to take their sign down. That would be a perfect scenario. But basically, depending on whether the village notifies you or you read our regular nonconforming code, 10 days to three months, that sign is supposed to go. It also says that if you have what would be considered a nonconforming sign, and I guess I should real quickly say, a nonconforming sign is a sign that over, that at one point was allowed, but codes have changed and we wouldn't let you do the same thing today. So do we make you take it down, or do we let you have it? What it's called, what we consider it as, a legal, nonconforming sign. As long as you have it, it's okay. When you go to change it, that's when we scratch our heads and figure out if we need to make you come into compliance. So I've actually put into the code some language that helps us determine what can be done. So in this case, allow maintenance and panel changes. So if you have a large, 100-foot-tall sign out by the street, and it's for a shopping center, and it has lots of panels, we will let you make panel changes to that. We're not going to come and say, "Nope, sign's too big, take it down." Tenant panel change is the same thing. So those are the smaller panels within it. We will not let you make it bigger, obviously, so we're prohibiting an increase in size. We would prohibit moving of a nonconforming sign. So basically, if you say, "Well, well, Joe, I leased this space over here, and I had the sign up there for 20 or 30 years, and it's three times the size you would allow. I'd like to move it," we're not going to let you move it. Abandoned or discontinued signs lose the nonconforming status after one year. So what does that mean? That means that if there's a sign that is too big or in the wrong place, rather than 10 days to three months, we will give you one year. I know that John's looked at some of the, some of the things I've discussed, I just got comments from John, so that there would be some tweaking, but the general idea is that we give you one year. So if you own a space and there's a sign on the building and it's a nonconforming sign, if your tenant, if a new tenant does not come in within one year, and then it's one year and one week, and you come in and approaches for a sign, we're going to say, "You've exceeded that one-year limit." There is, there is no way to forever permit what is not currently allowed. This is much relaxed. Excuse me.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
There is, or make a comment and a question, there is a provision that says if a business is no longer operating on the property, the sign advertising that business has to be removed within 30 days.
Yes.
And it says 30 days after notice. I think you should just say 30 days.
Yes.
This is a little different. This talks about if the sign itself is discontinued or no longer used. So I guess that would be in a circumstance where the business is still a going concern, but they no longer, for example, use some large pole sign out front. There's no signage on it. It's just a sign structure that's there. Or, yeah, I guess that's the circumstance we'd say that's got to come down.
Correct.
Okay.
And then obviously, none of this would override a previous variance approval. If you had an approved variance, there's nothing that I can do with the sign code that would invalidate your variance. So if you got a variance for three times the amount of signage, like a gas station, that is, runs with the property. I can't take that away from anyone, and that's not the intent. So I want to go into some of the types of signage. So wall signage. Wall signage is basically, these are three good examples. These are the signs that you place on the building. So what are some of my proposed modifications? And so this is not everything that's proposed. This is the big highlights that I'm trying to get through, and, wow, it's nine o'clock already. So B1 district, so that's our downtown district. We're actually, I'm actually looking at increasing it. Right now, it's 1.5 square feet per lineal foot of frontage. I think we should just treat it as every other business district at two square feet per lineal frontage. So basically, a little relaxation, 33% increase in the amount of signs in the downtown that they can have. Now that said, the next one is individual letter signage. I am proposing that no new cabinet or box signs would be permitted. An example is the State Farm sign is what we consider a cabinet or box sign. There are ones that exist throughout the village in the downtown, and just like before, if they met the nonconforming status and didn't change over after one year and met all those terms, there's nothing that would have to happen to any of those. We are just encouraging, the individual letter signs are higher quality, they give a better impression of the community, and they fit our strategic plan and comprehensive plan a bit closer. Other communities have restricted, some haven't. We are proposing that no new ones be done, but we think that the nonconforming clause that allows people to keep the ones they have is very generous. New language for shopping centers. Right now, if you look, it says, it's, "What is your lineal frontage to the street?" Staff has always made internal kind of decisions when a shopping center has a business that doesn't actually front to the street. Oftentimes, they front to, internal to each other sometimes, and we would just say, "Well, what's the front of your business?" So there's new language in there to kind of make it a little bit clearer. And actually, in that language, it actually gives a corner unit the opportunity to have two signs. Currently, our sign, our sign code is very confusing. It says that if you're on a corner, you can have one additional sign. Not one ground sign and two signs on the building, which you would normally expect. It just says you can have one additional sign. Has no provisions for a shopping center. So we've actually said, if you're a shopping center and you get the end unit, you could have two signs on there. New language for the office resource district, and this is really just kind of looking at what we call a strip center or a tenant center. So if you have a standalone building that has one entrance, and you lease out space on every floor and your tent floor is tall, you would only be permitted one sign on the building. That's how it's always been, that's how it is now. If you look at some of the buildings along 83rd, I think K5 put a new sign up on there. There's one sign on the building. There are a couple that have more than one, but they've obtained variances for that. But we actually have a lot of smaller-scale office developments, like Brush Hill would be a good example, where we have a lot of the tenants that are in there that say, "Why can't I have my own sign? I have my own entrance. You know, I pay, I pay, I have my own entrance. My, people come park in front of my building, and I, you're telling me I can't have a sign." So basically, I'm saying that you would be permitted your own sign. So it does give some relaxation to those kinds of scenarios. There are some new corner lot calculation revisions. It's a new calculation method. I'll get to that in a bit, once everyone falls asleep. But basically, it is another relaxation of the code. It is not a more restrictive code. So I'm going to use this example before, it looks like. Forgive me for a second. I put this together after a long night of not sleeping. Okay. Where I was going is I wanted to address the code again. So basically, same scenario, building width of 50 feet would be permitted 100 square feet of signage. On a corner lot, we established that it was a 50 by 30 building. So basically, what I'm saying is that we should treat each frontage individually. So if you have 50 feet on one street and 30 feet on another, we're treated as two separate individual things. So based on the old calculation, I probably got ahead of myself, a corner lot in this scenario would only be permitted 75 square feet of signage by that 1.5 times the 50 of the longest. So what I'm proposing, and the actual text similar to this, would be, "On corner street frontages, two signs, one facing each street shall be permitted." Corner lot, two signs. Such signs must have a total area equal to the permitted gross surface area for each individual frontage. So Joe, what does that mean? That means that on the 50-foot side, you'd be allowed to have two square feet per lineal foot, and on the 30-square-foot side, you'd be allowed two lineal feet for a total of 160 square feet. And what I want to kind of point out is that it does not mean that you can have one sign that's 160 square feet. It means that you can have a sign on each side of the building that is dependent on how much your frontage that building has. If I start losing anyone, just let me know, because I'm kind of losing myself. I will give another example. I kind of wrapped up with some better examples to help you understand. So I'm going to move into ground signs. Right now, ground signs are derived as a percentage of the allowable signage. So if I say, "You're 50 feet wide, you're allowed 100 square feet of signage," the way the current code reads it says, "Up to one square foot of your allowable signage per lineal foot can be attributed to a ground sign." So basically, that says, "You're allowed two square feet, and I'm making you save one square foot, that's 50%." So for one, I'm cleaning up the language. I'm saying, "Half of your signage allowance can be on a ground sign." What I'm proposing is corner lots, because they have two signs we're allowing now, it's more permitted area, so they're allowed more signage. Corner lots are permitted a second sign. Like I said before, right now, it says that corner lots are allowed a second sign. So you cannot have one sign on the building, one sign on the other side of the building, and one ground sign. I'm correcting that, so you can have that. So increased area and increased number for corner lots. Ground sign bases, we are looking at a pole sign prohibition. So there are a lot of pole signs that are in the village, and a lot of communities actually have prohibited them completely. Now, where we differ from other communities, and I use Downers Grove as an example, if you notice all the signs over there about this tall, because they came up with code that said, I think, six, six feet, something like that, something very low is what they should be. Our sign code is 16 feet tall, and we're not looking at changing that. We're not looking at restricting that. But we do want to look at higher-quality signs. Higher-quality signs usually have bigger, more substantial bases. Now, substantial bases, there are requirements, so you can still see around them and at corners and such, and we do have lots of provisions for that. But basically, we're saying that we would like to see a more substantial base on the sign. Once again, the nonconforming clause does not affect those that have existing pole signs. Initially, I think at one of the first meetings that some of you looked at, I was looking at what were the triggers. So if you came in for a face change on your pole sign, do we make you, to bring it shorter or add a base to it? I've taken all that out. I basically said, "If you're nonconforming and you meet one of those, those changes you're allowed to make, you can continue to have the sign. I won't nickel-and-dime it over time into conformance. It's there, it's allowed to be there as long as it's in continuous existence." But if you're proposing a new sign, then if you are between zero and eight feet, we'd like to see the base at least half as wide. If you're eight feet or above, we'd like it to see three-quarters of wide. And then there are some landscape requirements. We actually have landscape requirements now, but basically, I think the way it's worded, it says that all new, new ground signs shall be surrounded by year-round landscaping. And that's it. What does that mean? How much landscaping? How many plants? Should there be a planter box? Should it be so many feet out from the base? We did define that, and we actually used our landscape consultant to figure out what the smart thing to do is. There are a few planter boxes out there that the first, after the first season, everything dies because it's about this wide. It met our requirement for year-round landscaping, but the dirt is only that deep and nothing can live in it, so we had to figure out something better. A good example, I think that is in Downers Grove. If anyone's been over to, I want to say it's Teddy's at 63rd and Main. They put a sign right in the middle of their driveway, and then you could see Downers Grove actually made them build a planter box around it. We have one good example, and that's at O'Reilly's Auto Parts. It's, the sign's in the middle of the parking lot, and there's a planter box around it so that it can support the landscape that's there. So some new language for shopping centers. So clarifying multi-tenant signage based on the width of the lot, and I'll show you an example there, but basically, it's another example of where we're increasing the allowable area of signage. Temporary signage, this has always been a hot topic throughout the village. There is no way to 100% regulate temporary signage. We do our best. Every community does its best. This, I gave you, you folks, a full-size copy, but I did do research. I looked at all the neighboring and comparable communities. And what I want you to take away here is, on the left-hand side, first off, we are one of the most relaxed communities. There is what I call the most benefit to business and the least benefit to business, and the red is kind of the least benefit to business. Lamont actually charges, so let's talk about fees real quick. Charged $70 for every temporary sign permit that you get. Our fee structure is a bit stranger, I'll get to that in a second, but the lowest is Downers Grove, but where Downers Grove varies is they only issue it for one week. So if you want it for three weeks, you're tripling the cost. Whereas, a lot of the other communities are, no matter how long you're displaying it, it's just one fee. Westmont is a different animal altogether. We technically have no fee for temporary signs. We say, get a permit and give us a $250 bond. And the purpose of the $250 bond is that if you don't take the sign down, when you say it's supposed to come down, we're supposed to threaten you and say, we're going to keep your bond. Obviously, that is not the intent of our village to go after businesses and threaten to take $250 every time that it doesn't work. What it results in is our inspectors going out on the day the sign's supposed to remove and saying, you didn't take your sign down. I'll be back tomorrow. And going out the next day, and it's still up, and say, you didn't take your sign down. Do you really want us to take this $250? Go out the next day, and it's still up. Ultimately, we do sometimes take the money, but that should not be the intent. And then the staff time to go out and send someone out repeatedly, not to mention the staff time to process the permit, which there is no, there is no fee attributed to that, that staff is doing, has never been accommodated in the fee structure. So I will be proposing that it is a $25 fee. The average was $34. So we're at the low end of the spectrum. Currently, our sign permits, if you obtain one, and a lot of people don't obtain them, many times, we go out and we say, get a permit, and the sign's down by the time, you know, code enforcement's out there. Right now, we're the most relaxed at 50 square feet. That is a big temporary sign. That's 10 by 5. That could block traffic, that can, you know, be very, I guess, beneficial to the business because bigger signs are better for businesses. But actually, the average is right around, just under 32 square feet, and a lot of the communities are at 32 square feet. That is a 4 by 8 sign, that is still a very generous sign, so that's what we'll be proposing. The other thing is that our sign code currently allows 10-foot-tall signs. That is a very tall sign in terms of something that's temporary. Particularly, if the wind kicks up, it'll take it right out of the ground and take it away. We are coming in line with some of the other communities and proposing an 8-foot-tall sign.
And Joe, just to clarify, this is just talking about in commercial districts?
You can only obtain a temporary sign banner permit in commercial districts the way it is currently written. I'd have to go back, and my memory is cloudy, because even for staff that goes through this all day, I'm not sure if it applies to the OR or the M district.
Some of the questions I had, yeah.
So temporary signs, I've kind of covered some of this already. Current fees, there's no fee, but a $250 bond. We'd be proposing a $25 permit fee, so that is a new fee. I did try to highlight everything that I considered bad in red and everything good in green and everything somewhat neutral in blue. New requirements would be a smaller sign permitted, and I do want to emphasize, I'm going to go back to my chart real quick. I did, on the bottom table there, to the bottom right, I did take all the sign permits that we've issued since 2012 and found out that the average sign size is 25.7 square feet. So by reducing it from 50 down to 32, we actually are accommodating the signs that we have been issuing permits for. We would reduce the height from 10 feet to 8 feet, and actually, something new, we would require a setback of 5 feet from property lines. What we found is there is no setback requirement in our code. It allows people to put the sign right by the sidewalk. If the wind gets it in a certain way, it throws you off the sidewalk or hits you in the face. So we said, well, maybe you should put it back 5 feet. New allowances for shopping centers. One of the biggest complaints that I have on a regular basis, the way our sign code reads, it says, one sign shall be permitted per business at any time, temporary sign. So if you're in a shopping center with 12 tenants and everyone wants to put up a Black Friday sale, it's whoever races to the village first and gets a permit gets the sign. I've changed the language. I'll still only allow one out by the street, but everyone can put one on their storefront if they want and get the permit. So I'm trying to relax it, because what we can't allow is 15 signs by the street. We should really be restrictive in that. But if you want to put one on your building, go right ahead. The shopping center that has, Great American Bagel is a good example, there, the tenants there are always competing with each other to get the next sign allowance, because it never fails that the tanning salon and the H&R Block that's there want to advertise at the same time because your taxes are due right around the same time that the kids want to go on spring break. So it never fails that they try to undermine and undercut each other to see who can get their sign permit first.
Joe, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
On this temporary sign category, if you will, does that include the signs that contractors like to put on the side of their fences? Because you see a lot of that, that multiple signs.
In the exempt signage section, we've always had an exemption for contractor signs. I've modified it, because what happens, and I'll give an example, Aldi calls us and says, well, we're going under construction, so there's going to be some signs up for contractors. We want people to know if we're going to be closed or open, and we want to get out all this information. Technically, the way my current sign code reads is that if you want more than about five square foot sign for a contractor, you have to obtain a permit. You can only have one, and you can only have it up during certain times and certain time periods. I did write a clause in there that said that if it's construction-related, they should be a certain size, they can be placed in certain places, and they are not required to get a permit as a temporary sign. So basically, all those signs that go up by the contractors that go up anyways without permits, give some allowances and some size restrictions, but still allow them.
Service interruption, just so you know.
That's okay. It's a lot, this is a lot of information.
Lot of little stuff, yeah.
Yes. So open sales lots. So we discussed what open sales lots were before, dealerships and gas stations. I've added some language for gas stations, because right now, it's very restrictive on the amount of signs they can have. They always want some signage on the canopy. They always have to obtain variances for that signage. I basically said, if you're allowed one wall sign, you can have one canopy sign. If you're allowed two wall signs, you can have two canopy signs. Can't face residential, can't put any light on a residential district. So basically, how do we give them what they want without requiring them through the variance process and try to actually accommodate what's happening out there? Same for dealerships.
I will say that I've seen communities with gas stations and canopy signs say, hey, we want, if it's new, like a new gas station, we want, they, we have site plan approval, and that looks at elevations and architecture, and we can regulate signage still despite the fact canopy signs may be allowed. You may, for aesthetic reasons, in reviewing a site plan and elevation, say, we just want a small logo on your canopy rather than what may be permitted.
Yes.
Just, again, so you're not overrun by signage.
And I don't doubt that they will still approach us, planning and zoning, and say, well, yeah, you relaxed your stuff and it's great, but we still want more. The idea is kind of to say, well, if you want to avoid the variance process, we're very generous here. And my planning and zoning committee, commission will actually ask, well, why couldn't you meet our code? Because seems like we changed it recently and it was fairly good for you, and why can't you still meet that? It's a good test. Dealerships, I would be proposing the allowance for a second wall sign, so that's independent on whether or not they're a corner lot, because what do dealerships always want? They want something that says service or used cars or something. They never are very satisfied with one wall sign, so what, let's make an accommodation there. Now, that doesn't mean they can have more signage than are allowed, because their signage is determined based on the width of their lot. It just says, of that signage, you're allowed, you can split it on two signs now. So one of the new sign types that we'll be introducing is projecting signs. So these are the signs that go over village right-of-way, so it's not on someone's property. They used to exist in the downtown, there were a lot of maintenance issues, the village stopped allowing them. We are reintroducing them, really for the walkability of the downtown. When you're walking down the street, you want to know what business is five stores down, because it encourages you to walk five stores down to that business, and you pass all the others along the way. So I'm going to go quickly through this code, but because it is a new sign type, I wanted to make sure it was in here. So basically, if you're a business in the downtown, then this would only be permitted in the B1 district, in the downtown, where it's a walkable sidewalk. One sign for each business, adjacent to the first-floor facade. If you're a corner lot, you can have two. If you're a corner lot and you don't want one on each side and you want to put it on the corner of the building, like the picture below, there's a larger red sign, then it's a little allowance for a bit bigger sign. So basically, if you're allowed one sign or separate signs, six square feet, so that's like 2 by 3. If it's one sign, we're allowed to have two, and you want to combine them, you can do 10 square feet, so a little bit bigger. We would say, you have to be at least eight feet clear so that no one bumps their heads or a machine or equipment that comes through the village doesn't interfere with it. We'd have a maximum height of basically 15 feet above grade. The reason for the maximum height is so that if you have a two-story building and it's first-floor commercial and residential above, that you don't have the advantage to put your sign 30 feet in the air where no one else can, especially when it's right outside the window of a residence. So basically, keep them down low where your business is. You could project it out to 3 feet. There was some discussion as to whether or not we should require a uniform arm that holds it out, so the picture up top is actually from a shopping mall where every one of those arms is the same. We actually think that kind of the eclectic nature of businesses proposing this and meeting these parameters would actually contribute a lot to our downtown. We'd let them be illuminated as long as they didn't cast light on other places, and then strong maintenance language so that we don't get the pitfall that we had before where it became a safety factor. And then with that, and I don't have it on here, is basically, in agreement with the village, it says, I have insurance on my building of a certain amount so that if it falls and hits somebody, or I haven't maintained it and I'm liable, my insurance will cover it. So basically, it's saying, let's protect the people. If we're going to let you put a sign above them, let's make sure they're protected. Window signage, I promise we're almost done. Currently, window signage permits 60%. Now, if you called staff and said, Joe, how much window signage can I have? I'm going to tell you 40, because the industry standard is 60% is a lot. It creates safety issues when you decide to cover your windows completely. And let me tell you that window signage does not require a permit. We let the businesses do what they want. We try not to make a big deal about it. But when you see some of these examples here where businesses have covered their entire storefront with signage, that's kind of an unfair benefit, because they have a lot of windows, and they're taking a space that I would say was a quality space, you could look in, you could see what the activity that was going in there, and you've hidden it all. And what makes our walkable downtown, all this applies everywhere, what makes walkable downtown is being able to see into the businesses. So I'm going back to this chart again, to the very right, we actually did look at what other communities permit. A lot of communities are down at the 25% range. We did not feel that going from 60% down to 25% was appropriate. We feel that going down to 40% is appropriate. And actually, I wrote language in the code that says that it should be safe, that it shouldn't create issues for customers or, because the issue is, not only can you see, you can't see what's going on in the business, but if you're exiting the business, you can't see if someone's around the corner waiting to take your purchase right out of your hands. So it's just a safety factor. So currently, 60%, we are proposing 40%. Yes, I actually did physically walk up and down the downtown, and I took pictures of everyone's business in the downtown to try to figure out if we instituted this, how many people would be affected. At 25%, I would say one-third to one-half of businesses in the downtown would be affected. Going to 40%, I would say there are two or three businesses that will be affected. And it's not an overnight, we don't come out and say tomorrow, that's not the intent. But window signage is not one of the grandfathered things that's out there, because it comes and goes so much. There's no record of what was there. So if you are a downtown business owner and you feel you need to measure or figure out, 40% is what we're proposing. One of the biggest additions of language is A-frame signs. So what was revealed in the last year was that there is a lot of general unhappiness with the fact that we introduced an A-frame sign code. It technically only applied to B1 and B2, not all business districts. But basically, a lot of businesses put out signs that didn't comply with what was supposed to be there. They left them out all night in the middle of the snowstorms, you know. If you read the code, it says, eight square feet, you have to be able to walk around it. It should be taken in when you're closed so that doesn't, you know, blow out into the street. That wasn't happening. So we looked at a lot of things, including not allowing them. But that's not where we arrived at. Where we arrived at is we said, well, okay, for the most part, in the downtown, exactly the same rules. Take them in at night, you should be able to get around them. I did introduce a distance requirement, because one of the issues was that people were putting so many so close together. And the distance requirement is 25 feet. The downtown businesses are 30 feet wide. So if you put one in front of your door and your neighbor puts one in front of their door, it's going to be 30 feet from each other. So basically, we just wanted a proximity. And it wasn't the downtown that created the issue. The issue was the shopping centers that are out there. Wherever you have 20 tenants and everyone tries to put one out by the street, which was illustrated by that first picture where we had several A-frame signs out there. So basically, I said, okay, let's define where they're allowed, and if, in the downtown, pretty much the same rules. If you're not in the downtown, they should be 5 feet on your property, you should have a distance clear around them. You shouldn't be allowed to use them with your temporary sign, so if you do come in and get a permit from me and say, Joe, I want a sign for 30 days, I'm not going to let you put it next to your A-frame. I'm going to say, well, you have to take your A-frame in. You don't get double signage, you get one or the other. So basically, those are the kind of requirements that we'd be introducing there.
Joe, is the A-frame sign additional area above the building signage?
It would be independent. So basically, I don't measure the eight square feet and say, well, wait a minute, you're over your signage. Basically, if you're a business, you're allowed to have an A-frame, as long as it doesn't interfere with other things. So basically, this would be allowing that, and I will go back to those projecting signs, the six square feet, that is also independent. So even if you've maxed out on your signage, let's say last year you came in and maxed out on your signage, and you come to me and say, Joe, I'd like to get one of these new projecting signs, it will be independent, as long as it's six square feet, I can approve it.
Excuse me, Joe, how does that work at a mall? Just whoever gets their sign out first then, with the 25-foot restriction?
Basically, yes. It would be, what code enforcement could do, which they cannot do now, is they, if there's, they go out and there's four signs that are all right next to each other. They can't tell anyone, well, this seems cluttered, seems like too much, but they can go out and say, listen, they have to be 25 feet apart. And unfortunately, there is no provision that will give every tenant, if there's 15 tenants and only 100 feet of width, there's no provision that's going to get every tenant a sign out there. But part of the issue is that they put them out and they never take them back in. At least, this encourages a daily taking out, putting back in. And then, if, even if they can't put it out in front of the street, they still have the option to put it, as long as the sidewalk's big enough, in front of their business, so they can still have it. It's just, there's no way to let every business out there have their own A-frame at 24/7 and make it not look cluttered. So this was an intent that was actually driven by all these public meetings we've had to say, Joe, please try to address this overabundance of signage that is technically unregulated because they're not getting permits for it.
And Joe, what's the usual enforcement procedure for that?
I can't speak for code enforcement. I did used to work in code enforcement. And on a daily basis, code enforcement is faced with their own directives in terms of, how many complaints have come in, what are we dealing with, and how do we prioritize what is most important? Unfortunately, signage falls low on that scale when you have weeds and grass that are this tall somewhere and tenant issues and rentals and such. It does tend to fall back. But the idea is that it's code enforcement and the building inspectors are driving around. If they drive around and see a bunch of A-frames, that they stop and say to the business, hey, did you know they're supposed to be 25 feet apart? And by the way, you're supposed to take them in at night, can you please try to comply? And get general compliance through there. Okay, this is something else you don't need to read. What I want you to recognize is, what I did is, in the top, I basically colorized What I want you to recognize is, what I did is, in the top, I basically colorized everything in our code. And I said, "Well, does it pertain to temporary signs? Is it general stuff? Is it specific stuff? Is it a prohibition? Is it an exemption?" And when you look at the top, you'll see that the colors are somewhat intermixed. So the bottom is the reorganization. The idea is that with the reorganization, and you want to look at temporary sign code, it is in one section. So there was no way to be perfect with everything, but I tried to get all the exemptions in the same place, all the prohibitions in the same place, all the temporary sign stuff in the same place. And when you actually look at it, the way I structured the code, it says wall signs, ground signs, temporary signs, other signs. We're trying to get a structure to it so it's readable. So here, I'm going to give you some examples that tries to clarify some of the numbers that I threw at you. So I said I've changed things for shopping centers. If you model through our code and you go actually into the footnote of one of those charts, it says that shopping centers, multi-tenant shopping centers, is allowed one square foot on top of all the other signage based on the length of the facade of the shopping center attributed to a shopping center sign. So I took one of our examples that's existing that doesn't have any tenants, so I won't be offending anyone. That shopping center has 1,200 square feet, or 1,200 lineal feet of frontage. The way our code reads, it says that that shopping center is allowed one sign at 1,200 square feet. That's huge. Why would we want a shopping center that size to only be permitted one ground sign and then allow them to make it at 1,200 square feet? But if that property owner approached me today with that permit, I would have to say, "Great. As long as it's not more than 16 feet tall, it'll be a very long sign." The way I propose it is, we look at the frontage, and we say, "Well, what is your frontage to the street?" And for shopping centers specifically, it would be half of the frontage up to a maximum of 200 square feet. 200 square feet is a substantial-sized sign, and as a relationship to understand, the Jewel Osco signs, which although are much taller than permitted, are actually 175 square feet apiece. So those are substantial-sized signs. I did not have the 200 square feet in my last presentation, and after some discussions with some folks, said, "Maybe we should have a cap." What does that cap do? It makes them do it at 200 square feet or ask for a variance. It's not... We've always had the variance process that will still exist. We've just given some more generic parameters rather than one sign at 1,200 square feet. So I'm going to use the shopping center again for another scenario. If you remember where Maxwell's was. The way my current sign code reads, it said, "They have 50-foot of frontage that faces 63rd." That would mean they're allowed 100 square feet of signage. Now, they can divide that up, some onto a monument sign, some onto the wall sign, but basically 100 square feet of signage. No allowance for the side where their door faces the parking lot, which is actually their front door. So my code says, "Well, no, you can have a sign that's based on your frontage to each," because I've got a clause in there that says what you face to the parking lot as well. So basically, I would allow 100 square feet to the south, and I would allow 60 square feet to the east. So I've gone from 100 square feet of permitted signage to 160 square feet of permitted signage. So it is an increase. It's a relaxation. And finally, I'm going to take Burger King. They're on a corner lot. They're an outlaw. They're their own independent lot. So basically, I would say, "Well, okay, Burger King has an unfair advantage because they have a long, slender building along Cass Avenue." And actually, most of that building is architecturally awful. It is the service area of that building. It's back where they make the burgers. The architect didn't invest any time or money in designing that. It's a flat wall. And actually, if you look at the picture at the bottom right, you can see there's no architecture attenuation to that side. So basically, the way I've written the code that says, "Okay, well, if you're a corner lot, I'll let you use two frontages, but I'm only going to count what is the architectural frontage. Windows, transparency." My attorney's looking at me like, "Joe, how do you regulate this?" But basically, I wrote in there that said, "If it is a service area," which the back half of that building is clearly a service area, "that it would not count towards the frontage." So in the case of this property, they would be allowed to have one sign facing 63rd Street, two square feet per the 50, so they'd be allowed 100 square feet of signage to the front. To the side, only half of that, 100 square foot, is what I would say not service area. So they'd be allowed 100 square feet to the other side. The other introduction I've made is actually that they can have two ground signs. And you're like, "Well, Joe, why two ground signs? One seems generous." Because each of those sides attributes 50% you can put towards a ground sign. I actually think it's beneficial to encourage a smaller ground sign near the entrance than one large sign at the corner. But I do still say that if the business elects to do one sign instead of two, there's a calculation method to allow them to have the one sign. So basically, giving the businesses more options to work within our sign code. That is the end of the bulk of the boring and making everyone sleepy. We did take this beginning in January of last year to multiple EDC meetings. We've discussed it repeatedly. I think everyone is tired of hearing about it. It is by no means a perfect code text amendment, but to be perfect, we would have to start from scratch, and the intent was not to start from scratch. The intent was work within the existing structure. And at this point, I'd happily open it up to questions, or if you want to let these fine folks speak, we can turn it over to them.
I think what we'll do is, first, we'll hear from village staff. Joe, do you have any comments on Joe's presentation?
Well, I was going to save this to the end, but I wanted to publicly thank Joe for all of his hard work and dedication over this past year. He asked for support in moving forward with this project, and after he received that, he threw himself wholeheartedly into the project, as you've seen. He keeps referring to staff, but that means Joe.
That means I take responsibility for all issues that arise, so...
But he's been researching, reading our code, talking to other businesses, taking pictures, and he's done a substantial amount of this before work, after work, and on beautiful summer weekends. So I'd like to say thank you to Joe and just how appreciative we are for how much effort he's put into this.
I echo that also. I've been to five of your presentations prior to this, so you've done a great job with it. Let's open the public hearing. Please.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My store is currently open, and my poor mother's been watching it since 7:00.
Oh, boy.
My name is Mike Kaplan. I own Mr. Wayne's Pop Culture Collectibles right over there. I have one thing to say. Everything sounds great in this presentation. There is one problem I have with the whole code, and that is the lightbox signs. A lightbox sign is a cost-effective way to get people in my store. The individual lights are more expensive to do the... And as I've been in business about a year, I don't know if you guys remember making my presentation about a year ago. We don't have a lot of money, and every little bit counts. And a lightbox sign, being on Burlington, can be seen coming around, coming across the tracks. A lightbox sign can be seen from the train, more importantly, and that's why I'm at that address, is because of the train. And I wanted to look, and yeah, you can actually see the Arts Grooming sign from here. You can't see the Edward Jones sign, which is two doors down because it's not a white background, and you can't see the Corner Store sign with the goose neck lights. If I understand correctly, the reason you want to go with those lights, the individual letter signs, is more of a look, right? You want it to... Maybe the lightbox signs are seen as tacky or whatever it is. I guess my only comment on that is, the lightbox sign would be a cost-effective way to bring people into my store. I don't think it does too much against the beautification of Westmont. And if that's the case, there's probably other things we could put our time into as opposed to the lights that bring people into the stores, like, I don't know, the amount of drunk people that walk around before noon. So if we're talking about just making Westmont a better town, a more, you know, a town that brings people in, I really don't think having a lightbox sign which can be seen from the train where people will stop at the train station, get off, and shop in town. I don't think that's... Everything else looks great, but I really don't think that pulls our village back by any way, by any means. In fact, to have me have to have a lightup sign with the letters, I would almost at this point in the business, I would not be able to afford it, therefore, I would not be able to have a sign.
Do you have a lightbox sign now?
No, we don't. So we want to put one up. Both my neighbors right next to me, Artistic Grooming, too, they have one, and we would get lost in the shuffle without it. So it's just my comment on it, that everything else looks great. The stuff about the temporary signs and the A-frame signs, all that, some seems fair and all that, it's just that one little thing, and it just comes down to cost for a small business. So thank you for your time.
May I comment?
Sure, please.
It's all appreciated, and you are correct, that a lot of it is aesthetics for that type of sign. I will tell you that the current sign code, though, although it does allow box signs in the downtown where you are, would not permit the light. Basically, you can't have dark letters and white background. You could only have transparent letters and dark backgrounds. So even if it was a box, and it would be more affordable at night, it would still be only the letters that could be seen.
I believe that's another thing that should be amended in there, that we should be able to have white signs with the letters. Again, there's lots of things you can do to make a town look great. I think preventing in any way, shape, or form, the business owners from getting people in their door is probably not the way to do that. So thank you. I got to get back to work.
Okay. Thank you. Rick, Mr. Phillips, Larry? Gentlemen?
Generally supportive.
Can I have you... We've got a home audience, and they've been waiting to see you all night.
I'm signed in, and my name's Baxter with Phillips Flowers. I'm generally supportive and here mostly for educational purposes, my own. Have a few little nits that I can pass on to Joe or to Larry, but don't have any public comments.
Thank you for coming also. Anyone else? Larry, did you want to say anything?
Just real quickly to echo Jill's comments, to say, "Well done." This has been a long process, several months. I know several other communities have gone through this process. I know the community I live in Riverside, they've started this process a couple times, and it just kind of blew up because they just couldn't pull it together. Joe's done a phenomenal job taking a code that was very convoluted, very confusing, and very difficult for people to interpret, and has made it very simplified and easy for everyone to utilize. And when it comes to talking to businesses about moving into the community, that makes our job that much easier. So I think we've done a great job. There's been a lot of good input on this from our business community, from all key stakeholders, and I think we've made a lot of progress in these last several months, so well done. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry. We've exhausted everyone from the public, I think, so I will close the public hearing, and I will ask our village attorney if he'd like to make some comments.
Just a few. I echo Jill's and Larry's comments about what a nice revision this is. It's much more readable, and I think Joe waited till he had a finished version to give it to me, so I only recently had an opportunity to look at it, emailed some comments to Joe. Most of my comments are just some language usage, grammatical, whatever, nothing that needs review. My biggest concern in reviewing this is, there was a recent U.S. Supreme Court case where a town regulated temporary signs. They did not do so by the specific content of the sign, and as you know, the village cannot regulate content of signs, can only regulate like time, place, manner-type restrictions. And Joe does a good job of doing that. But you're also caught in not blowing up the sign code, trying to work within some of the current language and just make it more clear. And that's where we may have a problem or two. There's the section on temporary signs, which talks about special event banners or posters are allowed if they're sponsored by governmental charitable or not-for-profit organizations located over the public right-of-way, if they're approved by the Board of Trustees. And that's one of those, in light of this recent U.S. Supreme Court case, which said, "If you're regulating temporary signs for governmental organizations differently than religious organizations, differently than some other organizations, irrespective of what the message is, that's a problem." So I'm a little worried that perhaps we'd say, "This category of business, because you're a not-for-profit, can apply to put a banner over the right-of-way in the Board of Trustees' discretion." So if the KKK wants to... Maybe a bad example, but let's say a non-favored group wants to put up a banner advertising a non-popular event, the board would say, "No," but would grant it for Westmont Special Events Corporation for Taste of Westmont. Then we start regulating content. That's a problem. So that's something we need to look at a little bit, I think.
Can I just quickly? That is one of the clauses that I did not modify. That was taken out of the old stuff, put into the new stuff, because it was not something that I had the skill set to do an analysis, but it... I mean, there are probably some other legal cleanups in the existing code that I'm not modifying that... Just, I think the other, you had addressed flags, which were in there, and that was taken out of the code and just reinserted. That's not new introduction. That is just reorganization of existing language.
We specify how the U.S. flag has to be displayed, which I think we're all for. But if someone wants to display the flag differently, for whatever reason, can we say, "No"? That's something I need to look at. That's a little different than the categories of business concern that I had based on that U.S. Supreme Court case. I think my biggest... I'm just going through my notes here. Section that we need to work on is Section 11.11 Exemptions, which talks about, again, that gets into different categories of signs that are allowed. Some of them are temporary signs, but they're not regulated under the Temporary Signs section. They're things like political signs, like real estate signs, like construction signs, et cetera. Generally, we can regulate commercial signs, and we can regulate them time, location, size, et cetera. But when we start differentiating between classes of signs, different time periods for different classes, different sizes for different classes, something, if you look at sign ordinances around the state and around the country, everyone does. Everyone's done it forever. They seem to be reasonable. They're really not based on content, but based on this very strict and much criticized U.S. Supreme Court case, we need to relook at that and see if we can maybe have some more generic, all-encompassing regulations for those types of signs. Aside from that, I think my comments were cleanup and not worthy of discussion at this point.
I have a question, then. Would you recommend that we, A, either continue this to our October meeting so you have a chance to more fully develop some of these changes? B, go round the horn here once and then continue it? Or go ahead and bring it up for a vote as a third choice? If there's going to be changes, it's hard to really vote on it right now, I think.
Yeah, like I said, most of my changes are cleanups, and there are many times when you've looked at a project, let's say, or a text amendment, and there've been some minor cleanup things along the way. I think 90% of my comments are just minor cleanup things. I will leave that up to you. I would feel comfortable saying, after the fact, "Here's a few additional changes we made." But, and I don't know your time schedule, we might be best served getting all corrections in front of you at the October meeting, but I still think it's worth going around the horn and hearing what everyone has to say.
And let me put the same question to you. I know that we've had some long days today with seminars and things like that, and I think you mentioned you had several email calls and things like that. Would you feel more comfortable hearing our comments first, continuing this and wrapping it up in October, after you've had a chance to spend time with John, return phone calls and emails and things like that? Or do you want to see it come to a conclusion?
I would defer to you, but I would be perfectly fine if you wanted to continue, give comments, because I need to hear your comments. The opportunity for John to give a little more thought into some of the working things out with John, because it sounds like there are some sections that I didn't open up that maybe need to be opened up because legally, over time, they've become inaccurate.
Correct.
So I'd be comfortable with that if that's...
Okay. All right. Let's begin with Commissioner Carmichael, please.
Well, I certainly have to add my commendation, Joe. Your level of professionalism on this and the total amount of effort is extraordinary. I'd like to ask, how many different local businesses, people you interfaced with that you actually were people who contacted you or you contacted them regarding input to these changes?
Over the course of a year, I probably had maybe 30 actual phone calls. Over the course of a year, I probably had maybe 30 actual phone calls. We had maybe 40 that showed up at the business community meeting and maybe a dozen that were at the Downtown Westmont Business Alliance. A lot of the questions are worried that we were looking at doing something like Downers Grove did, that a decision made tonight in the Village Board would then require some sort of recourse after that against everyone to modify their signage.
So, really, this one objection or complaint tonight was essentially the only-
Well, no, I've heard before, you know, comments about the restriction on box signs. I think I've heard on the pole signs or the requirements for base, and those are aesthetic. Those, I mean, truly, it does not hurt anyone to have those in there, but aesthetically, in terms of our corridor plans, our strategic plan, where we're making significant investment in landscaping and gateway signs, that helps it fit better within what the vision for our community is. And those were, those kind of regulations are derived from.
Well, I agree. This is a very important issue. I mean, signage is one of the, all the thousands of people who come through this community every day, in every community, you know, the people's impression, this is a very large part of it. And I guess the one question that jumped out of this presentation to me tonight was on the permit, the fee, the fees, a straight square footage charge versus a percentage of cost. It would seem to be more, I mean, a little more difficult to get a really correct answer out of what was your total cost in many cases. I can see why people would rather have a square footage. It's much cleaner and simpler and no fudging.
It is much cleaner, but the fudging factor on that one is, that happens with all building permits, and it's always, you know, staff looking at it and saying, is this reasonable for what they're doing? Do we have to ask for a cost estimate, which is often, we do. A lot of the permits actually accompany, you know, the cost estimate from the contractor. So, it's an animal that's sometimes hard to put down, but where it benefits is where you're doing minor changes to a sign and you're not getting penalized for paying for the whole sign every time, which is essentially what you're doing. So, if you have a hundred-square-foot sign, it's going to cost you $500 to install it. And then if you need, if you change your phone number on the panel and say, well, Joe, we need to change out the panel, I say, well, it's a hundred square feet, that's another $500. Whereas the, based on the percentage of cost, that permit would be substantially less in most cases.
Very well, thank you.
Commissioner Weber?
I really appreciate, and I'm going through this today and all the work you've done, and I think that your expertise far exceeds mine in ability to criticize it. I know over the years, we've had a lot of difficulty with the sign ordinances. At one time, they were so restrictive that there was Burger King that used to be on cast. They finally, with frustration, just put up a huge American flag because they couldn't, we made their sign so small. But it's a very important issue to the businesses, and I'm sure you've taken into consideration all that you can possibly do on it. But what do we do with a guy like, this guy that was in front of us tonight? Now, because of cost, he wants to have the box sign, and yet, if we enact this as it's written, he's going to have to come in and get a variance in order to put up a sign like that, and there is cost score where he's trying to, you know, save some money. So-
But I ask you to look at the whole picture. Yes, he does have a valid issue, but we've also introduced that he could have a projecting sign that's illuminated. That could be an option for him. He still has window signage options, including illuminated window signage options-
Okay, well, we could work with him on that.
...which I think he has. And A-frame signage as well. So, there are still lots of opportunities for signage, and actually, I think his space is only like 12 feet wide. It's a really small space. That is a lot of signage for one small business.
Yeah. Well, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
Congratulations, all this work, and you hardly twitch it all. You can't see it, it's hid very well. My view is more of a pedestrian, it makes, I initially looked at it and went, wow, you know, and now after listening to it, I'm very comfortable with it, and that's all due to you and your presentation, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I would also say thank you. As a resident, I just am excited for the improvement that we're going to have. I do have a question or two. The, we didn't touch really a lot on animated or digital or scrolling signage. Is there any change to any of that code language?
It was probably two years ago now that we substantially modified that language. The only proposal that I've made in there was something that we found was being utilized is, right now, we do have clauses that said you can't have off-premise signage. So, basically, if you don't own the lot, you can't advertise on someone else's lot, or else someone that's not on Ogden Avenue would go and stick a sign on Ogden Avenue and say, please come see me 12 blocks this way. So, that is already in there. And what we found with some of the electronic message boards, that some of the businesses are advertising other businesses off-site with the electronic message board. So, the only change to that code was basically, I took the same clause that was elsewhere that said no off-premise signage, and I duplicated it in the electronic message board section. I think John had one markup in that section, but I can't remember what it was. But other than that, I propose no modifications to the electronic message board sign.
Do we already limit the, I mean, do we limit it so we don't have flashing signs?
Yes. No flashing, animated, whatever, can change every five seconds-
Five seconds.
...or longer.
Two years ago, we used to be, I want to say like at a minute or two minutes, something very long, and so we looked at all the other communities and five seconds was actually the determination to be appropriate. It has to be on a ground sign, it can't be on a wall sign. It is a percentage of the ground sign, so basically, it can't be 100% electronic. Actually, the ones that the village installed at the library and at the, we had to get our own variances for that, because it's almost 100% signage. The idea is that you should still have a substantial sign, and then if you want to add an electronic portion, then you can.
And then my last question was channel set letters. How do you, does our code define, how do you take that square footage? The surface area of sign, is it the box-out area of that, of those letters?
Our sign code has never formally said how to measure it. I haven't introduced it. That's where the sign code starts getting very lengthy. The way we've always done it is you draw an imaginary box around the sign. So, basically, a box that fits all the letters and logo and such, and if you've designed a sign with lots of dead space, then we count the dead space. There might be a little, what I would say, interpretation if it's part logo and part something.
Sure.
But in general, we draw a box around it.
Okay. Yeah, the only other comment is that I want to say that I am excited about both the individual letter change. I think that is going to add a lot of the kind of presence that we want to develop in our downtown, especially in our whole village. And the monument, our ground signs, I think also will be a big improvement over our current pole signs. So, I appreciate that, and I, again, I was amazed, I'm awed by the work that you put in. This presentation was amazing.
It's a lot of information, and although I know I still have some more comments to give, if we do take the month to kind of retool a little bit, I do encourage everyone, when you're in another community, look around, look at the signs, see how tall they are, see if they're individual letter or box. Look, you will see a profound difference traveling from town to town, and you can tell where that border is.
Commissioner Bartel?
I also am really delighted to hear this project. It's huge, and you did such a great job. Permit fees are reduced and increase of allowable signage, input from all stakeholders, the community, a way to support small businesses, which is wonderful. And good signs give a good first impression of the village. So, kudos to all the work that you did, Joe. It's great. Thank you.
Commissioner LaVoy?
This is like when I was a kid, I'm trying to figure out that Rubik's Cube. I always threw it away because I could never figure it out, and this is the equivalent. So, really good job, Joe, to put all the pieces of the puzzle together to make it work. So, it's all good. I really like to see the more contemporary signs, especially the ones that protrude away from the building. You know, it's very attractive. It would be very attractive for our downtown to have that kind of, that sign. But a couple of things. One is, I noticed in our monument sign criteria, both old and new, it hasn't changed, is the requirement for addresses. And when I got your package, one of the things that I did notice is that a lot of our windows are lacking the address. And then I thought of other projects that I've done about, I think it's covered on our building code, where the number of doors, you know, even at the school, the door has to be numbered for, you know, our crazy guys that like to enter our schools once in a while, but, and we know what door they're in, we know, so police, fire can really know. But I noticed in town that that is really lacking too, that not, it kind of struck a chord with me that, hey, we require the address on the monument, which is good, but a lot of the windows don't have the number on it, you know, for police and fire, for anybody else trying to look for that particular address. And I know it's covered under building code, but it, maybe from a regulatory standpoint, maybe it should be in.
And that piece of code has been in there for quite some time. And building and fire, and I don't know if it's in the property maintenance standards or in the building standards or the fire standard.
It's somewhere.
But it's defined there, and so we've kind of let that in their jurisdiction. Signs have been in planning and zoning's jurisdiction, and actually, I think that recommendation of the six-inch letters-
Right.
...came from the fire department, because they have to be a minimum size so that they can see it. And that's, when someone approaches us for a sign, they always, oh, why do I have to put that there? We say, it's for safety, it's for, you want someone to arrive at your business quickly.
Right.
So, I'm sure that we could look at writing it into the sign code, but I wouldn't want to duplicate or override what's already established in the other code.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if, from a regulatory standpoint, if somebody is coming in for a window sign and their address isn't correct or isn't right as far as our current requirements for the six-inch letter, you know, which I'm just looking for some enforcement that, hey, that our guys can get there in a hurry if they had to, especially school, library, public facilities.
And technically, we regulate the amount of window signage, but we don't require a permit for it. Maybe that's why we never wrote it into this section, is because basically, window signage becomes an issue if it's noted that you've exceeded the amount.
Yeah.
But beyond that, we're not regulating, other than flashing signs or something like that. I certainly think it's something that I can look into, and I can look into the code elsewhere and see if I can reiterate it. My one fear is that if it's in the fire code and then three years from now, the fire department says it should be eight-inch letters, and whereas they don't have to come through planning and zoning to change that, if I write it into the planning and zoning code, then it has to come through this organization to make that change.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, is from a regulatory standpoint, you know, maybe that should be in here somewhere. Because I know, and your package really triggered my thought process when I saw it for monument sign and not for anything else. And somebody could come in, like the petitioners that were here tonight, that they could do all kinds of things with signs, but that the letter for their address is this big and it's on their, you know, bottom of their door, you know, so it's kind of difficult. My last comment is related to lighting. There's a lot of activity in the lighting world, LEDs, everything else. It's pretty difficult. I've driven past signs that may be internal, but that LED light that's shining out into the right-of-way is problematic. I don't know if we can address lighting in here somewhere, because you see a lot of that going on, especially the car dealerships and that kind of thing, the new type of light fixtures and the LED.
And to address lighting, like for example, dealerships, when it is not signage lighting, like parking lot lighting, which is a lot of times the issue, we actually do have them submit photometrics as part of the engineering process and make sure it's zero at the lot line. Not to say that if someone changed out to new LEDs, it couldn't happen and we don't notice it. The illumination standards that are in there are very generic.
They are.
Basically say they shouldn't cast, and I'll tell you, I'm not an expert on lighting. There are a lot of communities that regulate the intensity, the lumens, however you want to measure it, very, very intensely, go out with a light meter. That wasn't written into our code, and it was, it has not been one of my proposed changes. If you want me to look into that, I can.
I just see it as being problematic elsewhere, you know, where lighting gets really intense, it's overbearing, and it's not covered, but it might be something that we could look at. I'm not being critical at all of what you have, at all. You've done a great job. I'm just hoping that, you know, with, as technology changes with lighting, we kind of make sure that we don't have issues that, in our sign code that-
You probably specified foot candles at the property line or foot candles measured from the middle of the right-of-way, or however you want to do it. And if, respond on a complaint basis, if someone complains that lighting's too bright.
A lot of times it's too, like, it's the contrast at night, because you have a dark sky and a super, so it's the brightness, it's not the lumen output necessarily at the property line or anything, it's just the contrast between the black and the super-white sign.
And where I'm going, it's very similar to the other issue with the building addresses. You know, yeah, it's covered in our code, but somebody could come to you strictly for a sign and not for any kind of sight lighting, that would trigger the photometric plan. So, maybe there could be a clause in there to restrict it at the property line, because you might get an application strictly for the sign. Just to, you know-
And it could be something as simple as shall not exceed at the property line, and you come up with-
Half-foot candle, yeah.
...with a standard. I can tell you that we don't have a light meter at this point, and my one concern is we have no basis to know what signs in the village already exceed that standard. That would be my one research conundrum that I'd be in, is if we establish a standard, then we should probably figure out how many are already over that standard.
Well, they'd be non-conforming.
But unless you've documented it, how do you document that? Whereas someone's got-
All new permits from the date of this amendment moving forward would have to comply with that foot candle standard and probably be responded, you know, they'd have to be aware of it as they get their signed permit, knowing that there is a limitation, and then probably respond on a complaint basis, and you've got to put it in your budget to get a-
I can certainly look into that.
...meter reader. I like the reader.
Also, is there really a problem in the area? You know, so if that's not something, you know, sometimes too much regulation is also not something that is looked favorably upon. So, if there's not an issue, then perhaps it's not something, it can't hurt to look at it, I agree, but perhaps it doesn't need to be codified.
Well, the thought is, the code currently talks about lighting, and it says it shall not spill beyond the property lines, but it doesn't have a standard. And I think your point is, maybe it should have a standard if we're going to talk about lighting, and it's probably not a bad idea.
We have a standard for everything, every other light on the property, as it, you know, if you apply for an application, there's a standard to it and a minimum at the property line. But we don't have, we don't have it here. So, that's just an area where I see as an exposure, especially with the new advancements in all the lighting that's going on, getting really creative with this stuff, and it can be problematic, so.
Well, and the intent of a sign at night is that it does have exposure beyond the property line, that the light carries, that is the specific intent. And that's where, I think that's why it's never been addressed in our code specifically.
But there is this, like, there are some signs that are- But there is, there is this, like, there are some signs that are, that I, I mean, I experience, and they are just, they're uncomfortable and not, I mean, I can see them clearly, it's just I can see them too much, like, it's the contrast. And maybe it's a lighting engineer that has to actually define what the units of measure are that are causing this discomfort to us. I don't, can't recall there being any of those signs in Westmont right now that I would recall, but.
The only one I can recall is the BP at 63rd and Cass. Their numbers are horribly bright at certain times of the day, so.
Right. So.
That's all.
Okay. Great. Well, I will echo everyone else's comments, and thank you, Joe, for all your hard work. I feel a bit like a Bruce Springsteen groupie here after six presentations of this from you, and I have to say that each time you spin the album, it gets better and better. So thank you very much. I know it's been a lot of hard work on this, but we appreciate it. I don't have any other comments. I've brought mine up for the last six months with you. So it's, I'm pretty much in agreement with this. I do think there are a few loose ends. I think John has brought a couple of those up tonight. So I would be very open to considering continuing this into October, but I'd like to just go once around and just see if everybody has a different opinion, or if you'd rather vote on it tonight as is, knowing that there's going to be some changes and things like that going ahead. Great.
I don't have a problem voting on it tonight and then tweaking it if John and Joe come up with something else. I am comfortable with it, the way he presented it, you know, because he did such a good job.
I would not have an opinion on it in either, whichever ways, or straightforward and efficient to the village, I think.
I guess I'd say, let's get a complete package and go with October.
I think I would too. I think there's some things that are brought up here that, you know, it needs to be thorough and it needs to be complete, because if it's not, it makes his life that much more difficult later.
Well, and I think part of, part of our job is to turn this over to the village board in as complete a fashion as possible, and I think that, I think extending it one more month, I don't think there's really a deadline, it's not going to hurt anything. I think it can only enhance and make it better, so. Doug?
I agree. Let's wait a month.
Well, no, I agree too, and that would be as a compliment to Joe, that until we, I know you put that much time into it, and to do that little bit of refinement, it gives you a chance to do that.
As long as I'm not limited on my presentation next.
Not at all. We look forward to it. I can't wait. I'm hoping to get a copy of the video, just so I can watch this during the winter time. All right, well, in that case, I will entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing and continue it to our October meeting.
Oh, I gotta find my sheet.
Okay, that's a motion by Commissioner Lavoy and a second by Commissioner Bartel. Any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lavoy.
Hi.
Mr. Bartel.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Carmichael.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael.
Chairman McPhil.
Yes.
Van Buren, yes.
Yes, Van Buren, very, we can tell the hour's getting late. All right, are there any other miscellaneous items or announcements to make? John?
Nope.
Staff?
There it is.
I just have a couple of things. One, I want to thank the village for allowing us to attend the conference that we've been going to, and will be continuing tomorrow. It's been very helpful and beneficial. Our next meeting is on October 11th, and finally, a week from tonight, I'd like to invite all of you. The Chamber will be hosting their semi-annual open house, and this year it's going to be at Lexus on Ogden Avenue. It runs from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and it's next Wednesday night, and it's a great chance to network and mingle with everybody from the village. A lot of the businesses will be there and things. There'll be refreshments, test drives, all kinds of fun stuff. We do this twice a year in September and February, and this September one, we're hosting it at Lexus. So it'd be great if some of the commissioners are available, feel free to bring a spouse or something with you. It's usually a nice evening for, spend an hour or two, or hour and a half, whatever. All right, last call, nothing else. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Sharp. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.